I'd like to call the August 7, 2008 regular meeting the Howell Township Planning Board to order. Mrs. Capitan, would you please read the opening statement?
Just a second. Where's the opening statement? Howell Township Planning Board, August 7, 2008. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice has been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 11, 2008, said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and Trittown News. Second, on January 11, 2008, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 11, 2008, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, Preventoryum Road, Howell, New Jersey. Special notice in accordance with Fire Prevention Code. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code, be advised that this facility is designed with three emergency exits for your safety. The locations are as follows. Upon exiting the meeting room to the rear, they are to your immediate left and immediate right and at the front of the meeting room at the left of the dais. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Roll call. Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Frazi?
I'm here.
Mr. Say is excused. Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Tantillo?
Here.
Mr. Vislaki?
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Mrs. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Dalton is excused. Chairman Estvez?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge and also a moment of silence for our troops serving abroad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, Mr. Vislaki has arrived.
Our first order of business is approval of regular meeting minutes from June 5, 2008, and June 19, 2008. Before I ask, entertain a motion. Does anybody have any comment on the minutes from June 5? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Tantillo and Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We also have minutes from June 19, 2008. Before we make any motions, are there any comments on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion from the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Burgess and Mr. Tantillo.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
I will abstain since I wasn't at the June 19 meeting. Thank you.
Minutes are approved.
Mr. Nacastro, do we have any vouchers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I received six different vouchers and they all appear to be in order.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the vouchers, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Mrs. Capitan, we do have a few items of correspondence. Is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Will you read the first memo into the record?
Yes, it's a memo from Bruce Davis Township Clerk dated July 18, 2008, to amend the land use building height and pervious coverage limits maximum, ordinance number 0-08-28.
Before we entertain any comment on this ordinance, I do want to make note of a correction. If you would take a look at the first page of the ordinance, Section 1, it refers to Ordinance Section 188-20, which is the storage requirement section of the ordinance. I believe that this ordinance should read Section 188-70. So if you would bring that to the clerk's attention, please. I'll open up the floor to any comments on this ordinance from any board members. Do I have any comment?
Mr. Chair, if I just may, before you vote, really the only revision to this ordinance was there was a sort of a typo in the original and instead of maximum, they had minimum. So this corrects that in terms of the building height.
Can we be sure to make note of the correction or the section number change when we send this back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no comment, I'll open up the floor and entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
I have Mr. Vislaki and Mrs. Clark.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Approved.
Would you please read next memo into the record? Thank you.
Memo from Bruce Davis Township Clerk dated July 18, 2008, meant HD3 zoning districts, bulk requirements, ordinance number 0-08-29.
I'd like to open up the floor to comment on this revision. Do we have any comment on this revision? Jim?
Yes. Is this on?
Yes, it's on.
Basically, when we had looked at the HD3 zoning ordinance, there were bulk requirements for non-residential development only pertaining to those commercial uses as part of a mixed-use development. The commercial uses that were not part of a mixed-use development did not have any bulk standards identified in the ordinance. So what this does is that refers to the HC zone, which is consistent with what we're requiring those that are part of mixed-use. So it just provides standards for people to utilize when creating an application that doesn't maintain any mixed-use, just commercial by itself.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, question.
Yes, Mr. Vislaki.
Does the HD3, is it basically for Route 33 or can it apply to highway development on Route 9 as well?
It's only those uses in the HD3 that this is pertaining to. Route 9 is primarily HD1.
Right.
So it's those uses. There are a couple of other areas, but primarily it's the Route 33 corridor that this is referring to.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to move this.
I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second that.
Mr. Schneider and Mrs. Clark.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Approved, or Mrs. Approved. Next ordinance. Next correspondence is a memo from Bruce Davis Township Clerk dated July 18, 2008, storm water management control and basin cost calculations, ordinance number 0-08-31.
Mr. Peters, you know how I feel about storm water management. I tried to match this up to the existing ordinance. Would you just give me a synopsis of what the changes are because I'm having a difficult time?
Mr. Chairman, after many years of wrangling probably on the order of three or four, Township Engineering Department along with professional staff followed the direction of both the DEP and the Best Management Practices Guidelines in preparing a storm water management and control ordinance, which talks about rates of runoff and discharge, it talks about water quality requirements. The thing that's most important for the township is it deals with the maintenance fee responsibility for storm water management facilities. Generally speaking, in the past, we would, as Mr. Mallon, Jack, might tell us, we sort of took a stab and said, "Storm water management basin takes this much to do." And then several years later, we said, "Well, this is how much it would cost a contractor to do." And then we figured out, we refined it some more and said, "This is what it costs for someone to maintain it, mow the lawn, fix the trees, clean the debris, and every 10 or 20 years, fix something structurally in the basin." So we've expanded the scope of the number, or we've expanded the number of items that are in the list of things that create the storm water management fee ordinance. Ultimately, there are two calculations that change over time. One has to do with the period of time with which this principal sum should be deposited so that it generates enough interest to pay for the actual maintenance of the storm water management facility, and the interest rate, which would fluctuate based upon rates of inflation. So to that end, this is a document that's been at least three years in coming, both from the Township Engineering Department, from Ernst, Ernst &amp; Liston, our office, and it's the embodiment of what we would call 21st century BMP standards. So if you'd like to sit here and listen to me talk about standards, we can get Jack up and do the same thing, and we can stay here for a couple more hours. Generally speaking, it's what we've talked about over the last six or eight months. It's been refined, reviewed both by council, I believe, at two separate meetings, and back here now. So we're lucky to have Mr. Mallon with us tonight because I have a conflict on one of our time extensions. So if you have any questions for either of us, we're here to answer them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schneider.
Mr. Peters, we've had a discussion before, for example, the basin at the Kohl Shopping Center. And when I saw that the water never drained, I met, if you recall, about two years ago with the manager of that, and he told me, based on whatever the code was, it was a small outlet pipe, and because it was a small outlet pipe, it got clogged constantly, and the only way it would go down if they constantly maintained it and cleaned it. Now, has this in any way changed the code so you don't have this small pipe, which I don't understand, I don't know what the exact engineering is?
The answer to the question is, it's a better design than what's out there in the past. Quite frankly, Kohl's, a number of things went wrong. One is there's no trash rack on the outlet structure. So what happens is debris will clog the pipe itself instead of getting around sort of a corrugated steel cage, which can easily, you can go in, you can lift it up with a hook, clean it off, you don't have to actually physically get down in the basin to clean it out. You can just get on top of the outlet structure and lift it up with a hook. So to that end, there may be some installation or maintenance issues, and Kohl's is a private site. So to that end, we always like to have a blanket easement that allows the town to go in if the system isn't being maintained correctly. Again, given the amount of manpower necessary to adequately maintain these facilities, we've tried to make sure that the principal sum that's deposited will generate sufficient interest or revenue to offset the cost of DPW going out and maintaining these, small, large, residential, commercial, however we end up getting them maintained.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Peters, along the lines of Mr. Schneider's question, will this affect existing basins or is this strictly for any new basins that come into town, or those that are already in existence are grandfathered and this current ordinance will not affect them at all?
Generally speaking, these are new. If someone were to come in with an existing site and wanted to modify the site substantially to the extent-
They would have to apply these standards.
-that you exceed the threshold, then these new standards would apply, yes.
Understood.
Any other comment or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Mr. Vislaki and Mr. Burgess.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Ordinance is consistent. Next, memo from Bruce Davis Township Clerk dated July 18, 2008, streets and sidewalks, construction signs, ordinance number 0-08-34.
Mr. Cacharo, before we talk about this, I just was wondering, is this within our jurisdiction to be discussing and making recommendations on?
The street and sidewalk section is not within the land use or zoning section of our ordinance.
That's what I thought.
So I think the council, and if you're going to err on one side, it should be the side of referring it rather than not referring it. So I think being cautious, they did it. Since they did it, I think the way to proceed is to first identify that we believe it's probably beyond the scope of what we're required to do under Section 26. But nonetheless, if you find that there's no inconsistency with any portion of our master plan, I think we should indicate that as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the floor to comment on this memo and ordinance revision.
Mr. Chairman, how did, does this previous sign ordinance we had was nullified by the court? So, Mr. Cacharo-
That, it wasn't a case that the planning board was involved in. So, you know, it wasn't something that I went to court on, did any briefs on, or anything like that. I don't, if it was the sign that required notice, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, there previously was an ordinance in Howell, which I thought was rectified anyway, which required a 500-foot notice, or actually not a 500-foot, just a notice, a sign on the property, that it was subject to an application. There were cases coming out of places like Edison and a few other municipalities, and the courts, every single case said, "Look, notice is defined in the municipal land use law." In the municipal land use law, you're required to provide notice to property owners within 200 feet, as well as other municipalities and utilities and other certain interested parties. And a municipality is not allowed to adopt ordinances which require notice requirements beyond what's in the municipal land use law. But again, I wasn't involved in this particular case, so I can only speak in generalities about, you know-
So this would not be affected by that, those rulings? Or we don't know?
So long as you're consistent with the MLUL, I can tell you, as far as what our role is in terms of, is it consistent with our master plan or not, I think those are a little beyond what we'd evaluate to determine whether it's consistent with the master plan.
Mr. Chair, my only comments, as I've seen these kind of signs all up in New York City when they do construction, my only recommendation for the council was that these signs post the name and phone number of the contractor, maybe the township building department, or so if people do have questions or concerns, they know who to contact if they see that sign. That would be my only recommendation.
We could take that recommendation back to the council, please. Any other comment? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion, to see whether the board feels this is consistent with the master plan or not.
I make a motion saying that it is. No problem to prove it the way it's written.
I'll second that.
But with those recommendations, if they want to take it under advisement.
Mr. Vislaki and Mrs. Clark.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Ordinance is consistent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schneider.
I don't know whether this is the venue for this or not, and maybe our professionals can tell me. There are many municipalities now that are joining together to sue Koha. You know how I felt and how the board felt about the RCAs. That was legislated out of our control and signed by the governor, and I don't know what the feeling of the council is if they have at this point discussed joining litigation to other communities to fight what I think is a very unfair regulation for us by Koha. So I would like, if it's proper and the planning board so desires, to make a recommendation to the governing body to join these other municipalities in fighting these unfair regulations by Koha.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just by way of background, I would categorize this three different categories of municipal side lawsuits that have been filed. The largest one being the League of Municipalities, which for the first time in its history is instituting an action against a state agency. And that has, I think they're up to over 100 or so municipalities that have joined their lawsuit. There's a second, smaller group of municipalities in the Somerset-Hunterton County area, Bernard's Township areas around there, that are also suing Koha, and they have, you know, what they believe to be some more unique characteristics that don't fit in the League's big tent. The third category, which is closer to here, would be the Tombs River Wall Township area. Several municipalities, again, have joined together to contest the regulations, again believing that their issues are somewhat more unique than the other two categories. Those are the three municipal side lawsuits. There are other interests that are being represented in other lawsuits, I'm sure, that are being filed. The planning board has no standing to file a lawsuit or to join within any of these municipalities. The jurisdiction of the planning board is tightly circumscribed, as our courts would say, and the job of the planning board is very, very narrow. And it's basically limited to considering applications, adopting and amending the master plan, considering questions that have been referred to it by the governing body, doing what we just did before, considering consistency of the, of ordinances. I would think, I would say at best, we could communicate, and I would suggest doing it in a format through our Class 1 member when it's, when Mr. Morello is replaced, and our Class 3 member, just to, you know, I can't imagine that it has gone unnoticed at the town council level that these other cases exist, just to bring it to their attention that, you know, we're, you know, just confirmation to the planning board that they're evaluating whether it's a good idea for this town to get involved or not.
Thank you, Mr. Cacharo. Being at a somewhat of a disadvantage this evening because our council liaison had an emergency and needed to be excused, and not having a Class 1 member appointed to the board, I assure Mr. Schneider that we will communicate with Councilwoman Dalton to let yours and what I suspect would be some other members in the board's feeling.
Thank you. So I can leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, to communicate that?
I will do that, yes.
Thank you. I mean, that's if the board so feels that we should.
I will let her know that it was discussed here. Okay.
I have one more piece of correspondence. The last case on the agenda?
Yes.
George Snyder, the attorney of Robert Rothstein, is asking for an adjournment to And he gave an extension of time.
Okay. If there's anyone here from the public for that application, it will not be heard this evening and it won't be re-noticed, is that correct?
No, I mean, I think they were requesting us to carry it without further notice.
Okay.
So the application is, well, I don't want to announce, the board is amenable to carrying it to, okay. Application of George Snyder, case number SD-2936, for minor subdivision approval, will be carried to the board September 18, 2008, meeting 7:30 here at the main meeting room, Preventoryum Road. No further notice to property owners will be provided.
Thank you. Before we move on to our resolutions, I believe that Mr. Tantillo would like the floor for a moment.
I'm sorry to the professionals and applicants. I know you pay people to be here, but there's something that I have to say, and I have to say it tonight because it's gone too far. Two weeks ago, there was a township meeting and discussions were brought up, and Mr. Bowen had gotten up and spoke to the council. I didn't like what he addressed the council with, the mayor or the council, and what he addressed was the planning board. Almost divulged executive board privileges, and our township attorney stopped him. He brought up things about executive board meetings that should be brought out to the public. First of all, I've gotten 15 calls in the last week and a half on this, people that know me for a long time. I don't lie to people. I tell them how it is. Mostly it's that, "No, man, no, I say like it is." Mr. Bowen has insulted my integrity and every colleague on this board and every professional on that side. He made, he said things in such a way, he flipped them around because there was a lot of people here, made them believe that things were going on in the back room, that we made deals. Well, what he was using, he's running for mayor, he's using these television cameras to get free publicity, and he's politicking on our time and your time. And I don't appreciate it. Most people don't say anything, I'm saying it. If Mr. Bowen has anything to say to me personally, he got my number. If he don't, it's 431-1752, and I live on Casino Drive. I am afraid of no man in this world, and this has got to stop. These people serve the town free, and we do a lot of work here. And for Mr. Bowen's information, this board does not have to give out any executive board information or minutes. And at the end of this, all I can say is, and I want to say this nicely, I don't think anybody should speak out of part of their anatomy that doesn't speak normally.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tantillo. Moving right along, we have two resolutions to approve this evening. Our first resolution is Blue Moon Motel, case number SP897, a resolution granting preliminary and final site plan and Woodlands management approval. Eligible voters are Burgess, Frazi, Schneider, Tantillo, Vislaki, and Estvez. I'll open the floor up to comments regarding the resolution. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion. Second.
Mr. Tantillo and Mr. Burgess.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the next resolution for Partners LLC, I received a letter today from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Pape, who had just one comment on the, on the resolution. I had placed in the resolution that digital and blinking signs were prohibited, and he had brought to my attention that they did present the board with a digital sign for Walgreens only for a reader board. I confirmed it with our professionals tonight. That appears to be the case.
That appears to be the case, so I would just, I will amend the resolution to eliminate just the term digital, uh, just, sorry, the prohibition against digital, only for the Walgreens sign, however, because, but the prohibition on blinking will, will remain. Just before we started, the applicant's engineer, Mr. DeFaco, came up to me. This was not in Mr. Pape's letter. He said that they had also asked for a Woodlands management plan approval. I have to tell you, that wasn't in my notes, and I don't have a personal recollection of it, but I don't, you know, I'm not the end-all of, of what happened here, so I bring it to the board's attention and to my fellow professionals' attention if they have a recollection of us granting a Woodlands management plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, our firm performs the reviews of the Woodlands management applications. I can tell you that one was included. I don't have the file in front of me. If you want, after our break, I'll, I'll check it with my office to see if, in fact, it was referenced either in my report or Jen's report. But my recollection was that we reviewed a Woodlands management plan and commented. If you give me a little while, I'll get it up on the computer and we'll go through it perhaps at the break and come back to it.
I, I'd like to table approval of this resolution.
Mr. Chair?
Until we have, one second, Mr. Vislacki, until we have a verification on the Woodlands management. But before I finish procedurally, can we still approve this with the amendment of the blinking light?
No, we need to resolve everything.
So at this point in time, we're going to have to table this
Yes.
resolution anyway.
Yeah.
So we won't, we, Mr. Peters, since we have to table this resolution for the blinking light issue, then we don't really need to revisit it after the break. Is that correct?
Well, no, no, no. We could, we could vote on it tonight if we resolve both of these issues.
Okay.
But we need to know, we've resolved the blinking light and the digital light issue, but we need to know the Woodlands management issue.
Fine, then we'll revisit this after the break. You had a comment, Mr. Vislacki?
Yes, I did. On this applicant, I kind of felt like we were deceived, and I, I don't know if it's in the resolution, was by our traffic safety officer. Mr. Pape testified to us.
Mr. Pape doesn't testify, he's, he's an attorney.
Well, the applicant testified to us, I'll make that, that our traffic safety officer was in total agreement with the rear driveway.
Well.
And when that letter showed up the following week, that was not the case.
Well, but the board did protect itself, and it said that we weren't just taking their word for it, and that a letter from the traffic safety officer was going to have to be submitted as a condition of approval in order to, to verify that.
So he, he, he was opposed to the rear driveway along with several of the residents. However, we were led to believe that it was, and a done deal, that it was the best practice, and I felt like we were deceived in that testimony, and I'd like to, you know, not grant approval based on that.
Well, we've already granted approval, but as I said, we've already granted approval, but there's, the condition is that we just didn't accept the testimony regarding the traffic safety officer. The rules of evidence are not strictly applicable here, but there are certain issues of hearsay that are more than, than we can accept, and that, that was one of them on a significant issue. So they have not begun to address the conditions of approval yet, and that letter from the traffic safety officer is one of those conditions, they can't satisfy it, they're coming back.
Okay.
Well, I do have a favorable letter that I did put in your package.
But we're not, we're not addressing that now, that's part of resolution compli, here's, here's the way, this resolution, we're not reassessing the application. It's a memorialization of what we did. And what we did was to approve it with that condition. And if that condition can't be satisfied, you know, we're going to have, we're, we're going to evaluate the letter.
But let me ask you, is that a matter of interpretation, because the traffic safety officer said, well, if this is the way-
I don't think so. The traffic safety officer, he's going to say, this is an acceptable plan, or it's not an acceptable plan. You know, it's either going to match up with what the representation was, or, or it's not.
Well, he kind of did both. He said, and he was not, he did not feel that it was a good, proper to have the rear driveway. But then he said, as long as if this is the engineering and, and the township's desire, then the way they've planned it out is the best way to do it. So I'm wondering if it's subjective based on that letter, I, I just feel like we were deceived. That's the only thing, and I'm never again going to allow, you know, until the evidence is presented to us physically, to, to see us given any kind of conditional-
I don't, I don't think any of our, certainly I haven't, I don't know, the other professionals have looked at the letter yet. I mean, we haven't memorialized the resolution, so we hadn't started on resolution compliance. So there, you know, whatever the letter says, we're going to look at it, and it's going to be distributed to you guys as to whether, you know, they've satisfied the condition or not.
Okay.
But, you know, just, just to be clear, again, this board did not accept that testimony. It, it took the testimony and said, you're going to have to substantiate it with the letter that, that confirms what, what you've just said.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we're going to table this until after the break. Next, review of submission waivers for the following, case number SP-925, applicant DMR Real Estate Incorporated, site plan to construct three phases of improvements on Southern Road.
Chairman?
Phil Mayor, Mayor of France, and Williams, Kenny Spain, everybody's got the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
So Mayor, you going to present a witness tonight?
Yes, I have Mr. DiLorenzo with me.
Mr. Chair, if I could just swear-
Yes, please.
-as well as our own professionals, you swear affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I did.
Just state and spell your name for the record, Mr. DiLorenzo.
For the record, my name is Chester DiLorenzo, D-I-L-O-R-E-N-Z-O.
Okay.
Che, would you please provide your credentials to the board? In brief, I'm a professional engineer, land surveyor, and planner, stayed in New Jersey. I have been for about 20 years. I appear before this board-
We accept your credentials, it's fine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
And do you prepare the plans that are before the board, which the waivers are based on? Yes, I have. Have you, do you have a copy of CME report with the waivers that's provided? I do. Could you run through the list of waivers and indicate reasons, pull it away for the question? Certainly, I'm referring to page four, items number six and seven. With regards to item number six, item A is a digital copy of the plan, we wish to defer that until such time as hopefully the plan is approved. Item B is public utility will serve letters. This is an expansion of a warehouse. As such, there's, we already have utility service, we're asking this be waived, because we're going to continue to use the same utilities we have. Item C, it says as-built drawings of site improvements. I'm assuming that, that may be a, a survey of the existing circumstance. I believe one's been submitted, but I will resubmit that to make sure that we can, we can resolve that. If it's referring to as-built drawings following the construction, of course, we'd be very happy to provide that one, if, again, if we're approved and we construct the site. Item D is regarding existing well and septic systems within 100 feet of the property, we're going to add a note through R&amp;N. And item E is residential cluster details. This is a site plan, I don't know how to plan our, our site, but we, we believe that our site plan submitted should be adequate for the board to review it and be able to make a decision. Mr. Peters? Before I go to item seven, are we, am I pretty much on base with all my-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we take no exception to the waiver request for 15, 16, 27, and 57. The applicant indicated he's going to provide 47.
That's correct.
Okay.
With regards to item number seven, we will certainly provide a cost estimate, again, based upon the final approved plans. We just wanted to defer that to later. 26A is description of proposed machinery. I apologize if I didn't make it clear, I believe that was in the environmental impact statement, I will write a letter that supplies that, as well as 26B and 26C. Again, I didn't make myself clear, I thought we had provided that. Item 41 is a boundary survey. Again, I thought we had provided one, I will send another.
So you're not asking for a waiver?
I'm sorry? No, I'm not. I'm indicating, I have to address this, and I'm indicating I'm going to provide.
Okay.
F is item 42, uses of all structures within 100 feet of the site. Actually, we have no uses in, on the Howells side, the other side of the site's Farmingdale, but I will give you, I believe it's only one used, the lumberyard, but I will provide that. And item G is item number 50, existing contours within 200 feet of the property, and the answer is yes. That's what? We will, we will provide.
Right. Mr. Peters, do you have any comment?
Again, we take no exception. He's asking for relief from 23, 24, 26A, B, and C, 41 and 42. He's going to provide number 50. I would note on 42, the use of all structures within 100 feet, the gold lumber's actually in Howell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The railroad tracks are the boundary between Howell and Farmingdale. But again, the applicant understands that if, in fact, the board finds any of this information necessary at the public hearing, the applicant's going to have to give us an adjournment and extension of time to hear the application, go get that information and bring it back to us. So he does it, it is in power.
That's all we have.
I'll open up to a comment from any board members. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion as to what the board's pleasure is.
I'll make a motion to approve the submission waivers as noted.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Burgess and Mr. Nacastro.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've been corrected, the applicant, under number seven, is going to provide 26A, B, C, check 41, 50?
That is correct. I'm going to provide that. I believe, I thought it was provided in the environmental impact statement, I'm going to make sure it's clarified through Mr. Peters.
Thank you. We had a motion and a second?
Burgess and Nacastro.
Great.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Waivers are granted.
Thank you very much.
At this point, we're going to juggle our agenda a little bit and do Mr. Mayor a favor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And we're going to call case number SP-878A2, application of Sonic W&amp;W2, as applicant and owner seeking an amended final site plan to construct a four-foot wide sidewalk along the Route 9 frontage in the HD1 zone on premises known as Block 7810, Lot 2502, Route 9. This application expires on August 30th, 2008.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate also your hearing this.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, just before we start, this application, our planner has a-
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have an applicant who is going to seek an adjournment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Would you step, can you give us one second, Mr. Mayor? Would you step forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was actually here for the extension of time, that was next on the agenda, but I have another meeting in Old Bridge tonight that I need to go to.
But that's okay, let him go and just do his part and pick his course back.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We try to accommodate everybody.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Okay. At this point, we're going to take a look at extension of time, second request, number, case number SD-2920, applicant and owner Shaw, acre associates Conrad Shaw, Block 137, Lot 6, Fort Plainfield.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Members of the board, professional staff, I appreciate you taking me. This is an application for an extension of time of a minor site plan approval, a minor subdivision approval. I was actually before this board previously to request the first extension. Is this not on? I'm sorry. I was actually before the board to request the first extension. At that time, we were at a position where we didn't have county approval, and we had not made a resubmission to Mr. Savino for his comments on the plan, and we were struggling with our, Mr. Shaw was struggling with his professionals, his professional engineer to get the work done. Continued those struggles up until May of this year, when the extension had run out. We have now gotten our county approval, final unconditional approval, and we've also made our resubmission to Mr., Mr. Savino in response to his comments for the plan. A copy of that cover letter's been provided to the board for the resubmission. So now, we're at a point where we, we have all the work in, we actually have the county approval, and we just need an extension of time so that when we get back Mr. Savino's hopeful approval, or maybe very reduced comments, then we'll be able to, to still legally file the subdivision deeds to create the subdivision. So I'm here to, to ask for that, that extension.
What would, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Just so you know, I'm here for, as the council-
I got it. Thank you. How far along are you? What is a reasonable extension of time going to be?
Well, I think that maybe you could look to your attorney for the extension of time period, but I think that under the circumstances of the minor subdivision, it's generally a reaffirmation of the approval, which is 190 days.
Mr. Cacharo?
What previous, what were you granted the first time around?
Six months.
Six months.
Six months.
Six months, and then we got a six-month extension, and I just, I, I think it's another six-month extension, but I think we're at a point where we're going to be done well before that, but that certainly gives us that cushion.
Under section 47, that's appropriate.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Vislacki.
You know, I understand, you know, certain things that are beyond the applicant's control where an extension of time is warranted, but because an applicant has problems with their professionals and their engineers, I don't think that precludes for this township to extend additional time to this applicant.
Mr. Chair, I, I would agree with Mr. Vislacki that if that were the sole reason they were coming here, that that is not a sufficient reason under the municipal land use law.
I agree.
It's background information as to, you know, part of what the situation is. But to me, the, the testimony, or not the testimony, the statements that you should be focusing in on tonight, is that they've continued to seek their outside agency approvals, and they have now obtained their county approval, and during the previous time period and during this time period, they've made resubmission, they've submitted to Mr. Savino's office, they've resubmitted to Mr. Savino's office, and are continuing, you know, down the road to, to, to compliance. But I agree with Mr. Vislacki, if an applicant comes here and says, you know what, I hired the wrong guys, and that's my holdup, that is not a compelling reason or a legal reason under section 47. So I would tonight recommend to the board that you disregard that portion of it, and that you only consider the diligence in seeking the other approvals.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know when they got the outside agency approvals to county, because I believe that was the reason why we gave them the first six months, was to obtain those cert, that outside, and I believe if they've accomplished it within that, then I don't understand why this additional request-
Well, there's still, I don't want to take words out of council's mouth, but he said they're still also working with our engineering department to satisfy their, their requirements.
I'd like to have some dates, if, if possible. As, on the record, as, when did you receive county approval?
The Monmouth County Planning Board final approval was granted on July 22nd, 2008. The resubmission to Mr. Savino was made, I want to say May 2008, but if you just give me one second, I will tell you when we sent that letter in.
Can you tell us when you applied, when you, when you originally applied for approval with the Monmouth County Planning Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appears that our original submission to the county was in May of 2007.
Okay.
And back and forth with the county throughout that period. The engineering firm made the resubmission responsive to Mr. Savino's comments on June 13th, 2008.
And when did, what were the dates of Mr. Savino's comments that they were replied to?
The engineer's letter that I have, which has been submitted to the board, our engineer's letter indicates that those revisions are made in response to a review letter from March of 2007 from Bert's All Engineering. That's what I have. I'm, I'm looking for that actual Tom Savino letter, but I'm, I'm taking it at face value from my engineer's responsive letter that he included the right date.
Yeah, Tom Savino's not with Bert's All Engineering.
The Bert's All letter, excuse me.
When was it first admitted to Savino's office? Did you say September?
When was what first submitted?
When you submitted to Savino's office-
Oh, that was, that was, that was June of this year.
It was in June, okay.
That was by the time we were able to finally get a submission made.
And that's because you were waiting for some of your additional outside agency approvals?
Well, the county approval was certainly part of it, but it's, you know, my understanding of the problems are what you've told the board to disregard, that he had difficulty with his professionals.
Because I see from the approval, on the, on the, the resolution from- Because I see from the approval, on the, on the, the resolution from, that was memorialized February seventh, two thousand and eight, says that they were, had filed for county planning and board approval, was in the process of making resubmission to the township engineering department. Now, I think they said that they had approval from the county back in two thousand and seven, correct?
No, two thousand and eight. July twenty-second of two thousand and eight is when we received the county approval.
All right.
After that February submission.
So if this was memorialized February seventh, two thousand and eight, when is this extension due to expire? Expires twenty-second, two thousand, how, granted extension expiring April twenty-second, two thousand and eight?
Right, that's one of the...
Oh, because it was from, six months from the previous?
Previous.
Yeah.
Previous expiration, which is a full year from the date that the original resolution was granted. So we're a year, a year and a handful of months out from the original date.
Do you have any other comment, Mr. Vislacki?
No.
Any, any other comment from any other board members?
No, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of time.
Are you speaking to the mic, Mr. Schneider?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of time for one hundred and ninety days.
And I would like to second that.
We have Mr. Schneider and Mrs. Clark.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening and thank you for accommodating that.
You're welcome.
Extension of time granted for one hundred and ninety days.
Okay, let's try this again. We're going to hear case number SP eight-seven-eight-A-two, application of Sonic W and W-two as applicant and owner seeking an amended final site plan to construct a four-foot sidewalk along the Route nine frontage in the HD one zone on premises known as Block seventy-eight-ten, lot twenty-five-zero-two, Route nine. Expiration date of this application is August thirtieth, two thousand and eight.
Thank you again, Chairman Estvez. Bill Mayer, Mayor of Franklin Williams, Tennessee Ministry Freo, representing the applicant. We did receive approvals from you some time ago, preliminary and final for the application with the waivers and variances that were requested at that time. Based upon your ordinance, sorry, two things mixed up here. Here it is. Section one-eighty-eight, there's two-twenty-six-G, which is the, is an ordinance, I can't remember the name, but it's community improvement, the community standards ordinance. You provide four sidewalks along the major highways in commercial areas, anyway, to be twelve feet wide. The sidewalks along others, that's five feet. We had submitted what we thought was in conformance with the DOT requirements at that time. You told us you wanted twelve-foot. We indicated that we would redesign our plan and submit it to the DOT, you know, for their review and approvals. It's on their roadway as such. Mr. Grisco is here tonight. He's from Dynamic Engineering Consultants, who are engineers, and he can tell you what happened from that point on.
You need to swear your name first.
I swear on it, please.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Our boards professionals, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you just state and spell your name for the record?
Douglas Grisco, G-R-Y-S-K-O. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey for approximately three years. I worked with Dynamic Engineering Consultants out of Lake Como. I have testified before this board on prior applications as well.
We'll accept your credentials.
Doug, I started to say what happened with the submission. Could you sort of run through for the board what actually did occur?
In brief, we did receive preliminary and final site plan approval from this board a while back. As one of the conditions that we made and agreed to do was to provide the twelve-foot sidewalk along the commercial frontage of Route nine. After we received the approval, we proceeded to submit an application to the state of New Jersey DOT for the sidewalk installation upon, that had the twelve-foot sidewalk. Upon their review, we received correspondence dated April twenty-third of two thousand and eight indicating that they would want the sidewalk to be built per their specifications, which is four-foot wide. This correspondence was also shared and forwarded to your township engineer and subsequent correspondence went back and forth with the DOT representatives to see what we could or could not do. They've been very candid in the fact that they will only allow the four-foot wide sidewalk. We did offer to actually have sections that would actually bump out and provide an area that people could wait if they were waiting for a bus. That was not accepted either. They actually, the DOT would have a separate application if you were to actually add a bus stop and that would require shelters, et cetera. So at this point, they are, only will approve the four-foot sidewalk along the frontage.
Mr. Mayor, so I can kind of boil down the issues, I think I understand it. We have a local ordinance here codified in our community design standards, which requires a twelve-foot wide sidewalk. Your applicant did not secretly from that, said it would comply with the twelve-foot requirement. The DOT, which has primary jurisdiction over this area, has a different standard and will not approve a twelve-foot wide sidewalk, will only approve a four-foot wide sidewalk. So in essence, our local ordinance has been preempted by the state agency, which has the primary jurisdiction here.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
And what you're here for tonight, pursuing, recognizing that and in light of the fact that the ordinance is still there, is a waiver from that community design standard, which has been preempted by the DOT regulations.
That is correct, because that effectively will make our approvals valid and we can proceed. We've been actually held up now for three months trying to get through this thing, which is beyond our control.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's, in essence, it's not something that the applicant in and of itself wanted to get relieved from. It's something the applicant wanted to comply with, but the state agency has the exclusive jurisdiction, not just primary, I'd say exclusive jurisdiction in this area, and they require four feet. So it's just not something that the applicant is even, could possibly comply with from our local ordinance standpoint.
So our ordinance is referring to, in this instance, an area where we don't have jurisdiction over?
Correct, correct.
I think the ordinance as written talked about being in front of commercial areas and on a, on a municipal road where there's a commercial area, it would apply.
Right.
This happens to be a state highway, so it doesn't.
I understand. Do you have any other testimony?
No, that's it.
Okay, I agree. I'm going to open up this to comment from any board members. Do we have any comment?
Mr. Chair, just to let you know, the master plan subcommittee has revisited our community design standards and recommendations will be forthcoming from the board relatively soon to help eliminate some of these discrepancies that we have. And I think this warrants, you know, a waiver without a doubt.
I appreciate that. I've read that in the master plan subcommittee meeting minutes and fine tuning those ordinances will save our applicants and this board a lot of time and expense in the future, so I do appreciate that. Do we have any other comment? Seeing none, I'd like to open this up to public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and reopen it one final time to board members.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amended final site plan.
Second, Mr. Schneider and Mr. Vislacki.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And Council, you said the next time you came there'd be a bag of Sonic for it. You still didn't bring it.
Well, I'm trying. I'm not there yet.
We don't expect you to drive to South Jersey, that's okay. Have a good evening. Okay, our next case is extension of time. First request, case number SD two-nine-one-five, owner applicant Patricia Daly, lot one-fifty, I'm sorry, Block one-fifty-five, lot three-zero-one on Casino Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for the applicant Patricia Daly. This is a request for an extension of time on a minor subdivision. It was granted, three-lot minor subdivision was granted September sixth of oh-seven. The property is in the ARE two zone. It's nine-point-seven-nine acres. One lot has an existing home. My client's engineer resubmitted for resolution compliance to the township engineer, at which point they were told they were out of time. That prompted this letter request and that's why we're here this evening. There's a letter from CME dated July eleventh, which basically says, have you addressed the conditions of the resolution? Resolution had very standard conditions. It was nothing other than the normal publication fees, et cetera. Nothing has changed. The zone is still the same. The resubmission to the engineer has been made and my client would request a one-hundred-and-ninety-day extension. It's only a first request.
So, Mr. Cohen, after receiving the approval and the realization of the resolution, you promptly submitted to the township's engineering department and to our professionals for resolution compliance and it's just a matter of you still working through that process?
The prompt would be a little bit of a stretch, but other than that, yes.
What caused the delay?
To be quite honest, the resolution was granted, like I said, September sixth of oh-seven. It was not released to my office and my client until March sixth of oh, actually released on a cover letter of March third. Apparently, there was an issue that my client had outstanding escrow fees, was unaware of that. A letter apparently was sent to my office, not copied to my client. He never got it. When he was made aware of it, he paid the fees, the resolution was released. I didn't publish the resolution until March eighth of oh-seven, it was a technic, of oh-eight. So technically, you know, we're still in that period, but that's what, we didn't have, my client engineer didn't have a resolution with which to submit promptly, otherwise they would have submitted earlier because we didn't know what the conditions of the resolution were.
Okay. So there was some outstanding escrow fees and apparently you're stating that there was some breakdown in communication that those fees were due and that's what?
That's correct.
Okay. Any comments? No comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant the extension of time.
Chairman, I would second that.
We have a second up here. Mr. Burgess and Mr. Tantillo.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislacki?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estvez?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Extension of time is granted.
Okay, our next case is preliminary and final, site plan and village management, case number SP nine-one-five, application of Consignment Sports. Donna and Peter Thompson as applicants and owners seeking preliminary and final site plan and willing management to add a two-story addition to the existing building for retail and storage purposes in the HD one zone on premises known as Block one-thirty, lots thirty-five and thirty-five-zero-one, Route nine and White Street. Expiration date of this application is September thirtieth, two thousand and eight. Good evening.
Good evening. Donna Thompson appearing on behalf of Consignment Sports. It's doing business as Sports Exchange. I'm also the owner of the store, so I'll be providing testimony as well as representation if you want me to be sworn in.
I'm going to swear you and whatever other witnesses you have in right now.
I have Robert Siv, my engineer, and William Doran, the architect.
Whoever wants to talk, stand up and raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and just when it comes time for your testimony, just state and spell your name for the record, but you can wait until, you know, it's your portion. Our boards professionals, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
The application is for an addition onto our existing building. The, the history of our stores, we were located across the street in the Howell Center for about twelve, thirteen years, and through that time, we expanded the store from a small twelve-hundred-foot location to numerous stores within the shopping center. And we had storage trailers and we finally found a building two years ago and we moved across the street and now we've outgrown that building. So we have an application before you for, excuse me, an addition, which is nine-thousand square foot downstairs and an upstairs warehouse, storage of an additional nine-thousand square feet. The, it's expansion of the retail operation. If anyone has been in our store, they're familiar with who we are. We sell mostly hockey equipment, lacrosse, baseball equipment. We sell to, you know, all the local kids. We're interested in expanding into team wear, which is the, the printing of the shirts that you do for your baseball teams, your football teams. We need additional space for that. We've also unfortunately had to eliminate our fitness equipment sales because we simply don't have the square footage. We've also gotten into some internet sales and that's taking up additional space. So business is good in sporting goods and we're looking for an addition. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Siv, our engineer, if you could give the board your qualifications.
Sure. My name is Robert Siv. I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm a partner with the engineering firm Geller, Siv and Company. I've testified before this board as well as numerous boards throughout Monmouth and Ocean and Burlington Counties. I have over twelve years' experience in the engineering field and am familiar with his plans.
We'll accept your qualifications.
Could you just spell your last name for us, Mr. Siv?
S-I-V and Victor E. I have two exhibits hanging on the wall. If you'd like, I can mark them in now.
Barbara has pre-marked some exhibits, so that, your first exhibit will be A-eight.
A-eight will be the rendering on the left. It's an aerial image with the outbound superimposed of the site itself. It is dated four-two-oh-eight. Is it A-eight?
Correct.
And the second exhibit is a colored rendering of proposed development dated April second for this year. That'd be A-nine. The site is identified as Block one-thirty, tax lots thirty-five and thirty-five-point-zero-one. It's within the HD one highway development zone and is located at the intersection of northbound Route nine and White Street, right across the street from the Wawa that was built on Route nine on White Street. The site contains approximately two-point-four acres and, as Ms. Thompson indicated, is developed and utilized by Consignment Sports. Referring to A-nine, access to the site is from a right-in, right-out driveway within the northwesterly portion of the property off of Route nine, which provides access to a thirty-four stall parking lot between the existing building and Route nine itself. The building, as indicated earlier, contains approximately ten-thousand square feet, six-thousand square feet of which in the front portion of the building is used for retail sales and four-thousand square foot of the rear portion of the building.
Sir, I have to speak into the mic.
Can you speak into the mic?
Sure.
We have a hand mic, too, if you want.
I'll try using this issue.
All right.
The ten-thousand-square-foot building is divided into six-thousand square feet for retail in the front portion of the building and four-thousand square feet for storage and warehouse in the back portion of the building. There's also a secondary access to the site from White Street through a full movement driveway near the intersection of Route nine and White Street. There is also a fifteen-foot-wide paved driveway along the northerly side of the existing building, which provides access to a gravel loading area in the back where deliveries, delivery trucks come from Route nine and either pull along the fifteen-foot driveway back into the building and unload and load and either do a multiple movement turnaround to pull forward out of the site, or they actually sometimes, depending on the driver, back out the driveway, parallel to Route nine, and then pull back out onto Route nine. It's not the most ideal of situations, but that's how they're operating today. In addition, the site is currently served by an onsite septic system and onsite well. I'm sure most of you have seen or probably been to who... I'm sure most of you have seen or probably been to Consignment Sports and are very familiar with the operations, as Mrs. Thompson has testified to. The applicant is proposing to construct an 18,000-square-foot addition, which is shown in rendering exhibit A9, 9,000 square feet of which will be a first-floor retail, and 9,000 square feet of which will be second-floor storage. Site access will continue to be from, or the primary site access will continue to be from Route 9 through the right-in, right-out driveway. We are proposing to widen the existing 15-foot-wide circulation driveway to the north to the 25-foot-wide standard, minimum standard, and provide circulation throughout and around the existing and proposed building. The circulation will provide access to the 103 parking stalls, which are required by ordinance, and we're also providing a stormwater management system along the easterly portion of the property, whereas the site, as it's developed today, has no stormwater management. We will also be taking the building off of the septic system and connecting both the existing and proposed building into the public sanitary sewer system. That, in a nutshell, provides an overview of what's existing and proposed out there. We are asking for one variance as it relates to the 50-foot landscape buffer along the northerly and easterly property lines, as, because those adjacent lots are either developed with solely residential property or mixed residential, commercial property.
Can you tell me what's the distance? You know, I know you're asking for a variance, but what's going to be your, from the property line, the distance?
I'll go over that.
Can you, again, repeat your rationale for asking for the relief?
What is...
I'm going to go through that right now.
Okay.
I was just stating what, where the variances were, and now I'm going to go through the rationale for it.
Okay.
Along the northerly property line, as I indicated earlier, there's an existing 15-foot-wide driveway, which we're widening to 25 feet to meet the standard two-way driveway width. Right now, between that 15, the existing 15-foot-wide driveway and the property line, there's about 15-feet buffer provided. So, when we widen that driveway 10 feet, that buffer gets narrowed down to 5 feet. In addition, the property to our north, which is tax lot 36 and 37, is a mixed-use lot. It's currently developed with some residential and some commercial aspects to it. It's my understanding, and Mrs. Thompson can clarify or add additionally, but the commercial uses are in the building closest to our property line, whereas the residential use is farther north, farther away from our property line. So, that property, as it stands now, is mixed-use, and what we're doing is just widening the existing driveway from 15 feet to 25 feet, which is why we're reducing that buffer from its existing 15-foot width down to 5 feet.
Can you tell me what kind of commercial use is going on there? Because I'm not aware of any mixed-use commercial on Route 9.
The property is a large site that's owned, I believe it's Bob Gleason. He used to own Bicycle World. He still owns the building, and he rents it out now to a tenant that sells bicycles. There's a very small house on the property that he and his wife live in. Behind the house, they have several outbuildings. They actually manufacture the masks that the Blue Man Group uses, those blue masks. He makes them in some buildings behind his house, so it's...
But he might do that, but I don't believe that property is zoned.
No, it's zoned.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Zoned residential.
If you look at the cover sheet of the plans, lots 31, 36, and 37 are in common ownership under Gleason. 31 and 37 are the old Bicycle World and the track in the back. 36 is a residential use, which adjoins this property. I think in reconciling our ordinance, it's a mixed-use because they're under common ownership.
Okay.
So, from that perspective, I think the applicant, at the recommendation of the planning board's professionals, indicated that there's going to be relief necessary from that particular portion of the ordinance.
The zone is residential, is that correct?
No, the zone is highway development, H D one.
Yes.
The zone with the Gleason property is H D one?
The property that's fronting, it fronts on Route 9, is what they're referring to. It's immediately north of the subject property where the house is located.
Yeah, go ahead with your testimony.
The second area, which we're requiring relief from the buffer ordinance, is along the easterly property line with the residential lots to our east or to our rear. Right now, there's no stormwater management provided for the site. As part of our proposed development, we're proposing to put the stormwater management basin within the 50-foot buffer. Other site improvements, other than the basin and the drainage structures itself, the building, the parking, curbing, sidewalk, are all outside of that 50-foot buffer. It's just the drainage basin itself and any drainage structures within that basin. After development, when all said and done, the site is built, that 50-foot area will be green because it will be landscaped and grassed in accordance with the landscape plan as around the basin, around the detention basin, which is normal. In addition, the existing dwellings along White Street, which we are adjacent to, are approximately 250 feet away from our common property line, of which that 250 feet, 200 feet, is existing wood and mature trees, which provide a visual buffer to our site, in addition to the 50 feet, which will be green after we're done with development. There's also a consent order from the courts, which allows tax lots 30 and 31, which are to our northeast, to be developed commercially, even though they're in the residential zone. So, there is some commercial development, which is potential to occur in this residential district. Lastly, we're also going to eliminate the existing gravel-loading, unloading area, which currently is within that 50-foot buffer. We're going to pull out that gravel and plant it and landscape it in accordance with the landscape plan. So, for all those reasons, we believe putting the basin within the 50-foot buffer is a merit to grant the variance. It will be green and landscaped once we're done with construction. That's the only two variances we're requesting as it relates to this application. Is there's any other questions or comments regarding that?
Mr. Sev, you're kind of making the argument under both C1 and C2.
Correct.
Under the statute, that because it's a currently-developed site, that you're dealing with the structures and with the shape that currently exists out there, and there are limited abilities and locations that you can place the basement, considering the topography and shape of the property.
Considering the existing development on the property, providing stormwater management to a site that is not...
But even, aside from that, under the C2 analysis, you're trying to employ creative development techniques and improve the visual environment and the aesthetics on the site by advancing, you know, the goals of the municipal land use law.
That's correct. There's no detriment to the public good by granting of the variance.
Do you have any architecturals of what the, what the extension is going to look like?
We do have architecturals. The architect is here to provide some testimony. If you want, we can do that now, or...
Before he testifies, I'd like to know if any board members have any, any questions across examination for this witness.
First off, I'm opposed to seeing detention basins in the buffer. I don't think we've ever approved any applicant on this board with detention basins in the buffer. The buffer serves a purpose to provide adequate screening. Maybe the northern property is not much a concern since it's a mixed-use, but I believe those residents on White Street have every right to have their way of life protected, and I can't foresee in my mind wavering from that aspect. And it would be an injustice to them to have their, their quality of life encroached on this thing.
Well, it actually, if you, if you look at the properties, you'll see that the properties on White Street are very deep properties. There is a tremendous amount of woods, and yes, they own that woods.
But the property line is there. It's their property. They have every right to enjoy that property.
And the current plan, we are actually cleared in the one spot, we're actually cleared almost to the back property line. This is actually increasing the buffer in portions because at certain places, there is no existing buffer. We're cleared all the way to the property line. We've got dumpsters back there, and this is actually providing more buffer than the existing in portions of this.
Mr. Peters, I have a question for you. The stormwater management basin, is that, is there any time there'd be potential standing water in that basin?
Well, I'd like Mr. Sev to answer the question because it's direct testimony he hasn't given yet, and we'll comment on it, but...
That basin is designed to meet the B M P standard, which requires you to recharge some of the ground, some of the collected water back into the ground. So, that basin is designed to collect, maintain, and then recharge back into the ground, the two-year storm event. So, for a period of time, there will be standing water in it until it recharges back into the ground. It's not designed to maintain a permanent water surface within the pond, but just a temporary one to recharge that groundwater back into the ground.
Mr. Sev, in a non-technical sense, we would call this an infiltration basin.
An infiltration basin, that's correct.
So, in your experience, if there was an inch of rain, how long would water be standing in that basin?
In that particular basin, for about an inch of rain, I can go through the drainage report, but it'd be a couple hours, be less than 24 hours.
And how about two inches of rain?
Again, it's up to the two-year storm event. I think the two-year storm event drains within, I believe it was 30 hours, but I can double-check in the drainage report.
Just so you understand my questions, we have a severe mosquito problem in Howell Township right now. Standing water just exacerbates that problem, and this basin will be right, almost right up against these people's property line.
I understand that, and that's why it is sandy soils out there, and it will drain, dry.
30 hours, though, is enough time to promote some, some infestation, so I just would...
I can provide you with the exact drainage time. If you give me a second, I'll go through the drainage report.
That would be nice. I'd like to get that on the record. Thank you. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Schneider.
My comment is, this is a H D one zone. When you look at what's going on to Route 9, and you see this improvement to that building, to the community, what it's going to do, I don't see any adverse effect to the population with a plan like this.
Your comments are well-taken. Do we have any other comments or questions? Because we still have testimony to go through. Do you have those numbers?
I don't have it right with me. What I'll do is I'll continue on with the testimony, and then I'll take a break, and I'll calculate it.
That'll be fine.
Do you want to hear from the architect now, or...
Yes, we do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to clear now, before we move, that we haven't in any great detail gone through our report. We have a section that the board always likes to read. It's Laura's favorite section. It's the issues to be discussed with the board, and I want to make sure we don't forget that before we close the public session.
We won't forget that, Mr. Peters, I promise you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. I'd like to hear from the architect at this point.
William Doran. Last name is D O R A N. A registered architect here in the state of New Jersey. I've owned my firm for 22 years now. I've been, appeared in front of numerous boards as an expert witness.
Okay, we'll accept your credentials. Thank you.
Do we have to put these in?
Yes, the new ones, we're up to A10.
So, that'll be A10 and A11?
Yes.
If you could just describe each, each exhibit for us.
A10 is rendering of the front and rear, I'm sorry, the front of the building that faces out onto Route 9, and the side of the building that faces White Street, that is drawing A3. And A11 is the rear of the building, and then the side, on the opposite side of White Street. Looking at the front, what we've labeled front elevation that faces Route 9, the existing building runs about halfway to the left, from the halfway point to the left, and then our new addition will go to the right there. We will completely reface the existing building. We're going to put a covered porch area across the whole portion of that front elevation on Route 9, and also it will wrap around the side of the White Street elevation and run approximately to the end. We're stopping it about five feet short. That'll have columns supporting it that are wrapped in stucco and stone base. It'll have a metal-clad standing seam roof. The main portion of the building will be stucco, a light white stucco. We will run the stone, cultured stone water table line across the entire, both elevations, on the Route 9 side and the White Street side. That will actually continue along the back and other side of the building, but we're going to change the material to stucco, so that water table line will continue around the building. We'll have a projected cornice around the entire second-floor portion of the building that will run around all four sides. On the, on both the Route 9 side and the White Street side, we have windows on the second floor. On the rear and far side of the building, we'll have smaller windows, but we'll continue that window line on all four sides. We also have some architectural trim that runs consistently around the building to break up portions of the facade. Building is 30, approximately 32 foot eight, which will be within the allowed height limit.
Does anyone have any questions for this witness? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Peters, would you be so kind as to go through your report?
I always like the applicant to sort of give some testimony, but we'd like to comment after he gives the testimony.
That'll be fine.
We also have the calculation ready for you on...
Great. Can you tell me?
Sure. We use the factor of safety of two, and based on the factor of safety, two drains dry in 21 hours.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, no problem.
Excuse me, can I have a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schneider.
I don't see, I see, I don't see trees on Route, on Route 9 outside. Can we, is there a lawn area there?
The, that's existing. It's a, it's all lawn right now.
Can we get some trees on Route 9?
Well, the problem with putting trees on Route 9, existing, we have a nice big front lawn, and we weren't going to change any of that. The problem with putting trees is you block your store, and people can't see what you are.
Yeah, but it makes Route 9 look so much nicer. I think this is something that we have, we've asked to do. I mean, you know, I'm not saying to make a 50-foot, 100-foot, whatever the length is, a buffer of trees, but three or four nice trees along Route 9 would enhance the community.
I take great pride in keeping that lawn perfectly, perfectly green, and, you know, if the board insisted on it, I would put some trees, but I'm very proud of keeping that grass green and neat, and it provides great visibility to the store. I mean, if the board felt it was really important, I would put some out there.
The board feels, I feel that we need a few trees, more trees, on every commercial development on Route 9, to make Route 9 look like something.
No disrespect to Mr. Schneider, but I'm concerned about line-of-sight issues. I think especially on Route 9, the more open you have, the better chances you have of vehicles entering and leaving a property to be able to see down Route 9. I can understand along White Street, along the other edges, absolutely, but along Route 9, I just don't see the rationale in that. That's my opinion.
Well, Mr. Peters, we have a Woodlands Management Plan, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and has your office reviewed that? Because this is an application that's been around for some time, and we had a tree expert that started it, and I'm just wondering if...
Well, I think the, the difference of opinion between Mr. Vislacki and Mr. Schneider has to do with the site plan requirements for street trees, okay? And to that end, it's really a policy decision of the board. When we talk about subdivisions, we talked about this on the residential project on Route 33. We get to decide what the streetscape's going to look like. So, from that perspective, if we want to have flowering pear trees, or low-level hedges, or something to delineate a Woodlands Management-friendly frontage along Route 9, that's a decision that the board makes. It's a requirement, the applicant's requesting relief, from planting street trees.
I mean, in essence, does it have to be street trees? Could it be ornamental flowers or anything like that, something that's low-growing to the ground, or...
Well, certainly, that's an alternative that the applicant could proffer to you, and given a full hearing, we could grant the... given a full hearing, we could grant them that relief, certainly.
And just so you know, we are proposing a row of hedges along that front bank of parking stalls parallel to Route 9 that grow to about 30 inches.
Well, I'll just tell you right now, if I don't see a plan with some street trees, I wouldn't vote for this application.
Isn't there any signage out there for your store?
Sorry, there is an existing sign for the store. I'm not sure where the question came from. Yes, there's an existing sign within this front northwesterly curb island that says Consignment Sports. I have a picture out of, picture of it if you'd like to see it. There is an existing sign out there.
A large sign? I'm trying to recall.
It's, by my calculations, in compliance with the township's signed ordinance, which I submitted to both Burgess Hall and CME. I'm sure they've had a chance to look at it.
And you're not looking to change that sign at all?
The sign here, I can mark it in, is A10.
We are up to A12.
A12.
Mr. Chair.
And you're correct. We are not proposing any changes to the existing sign.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Tantillo?
If I could, I just want to answer up real quick to that end. We do note in our report, though, it is a pole sign. So just so you are aware, our community design standards prohibit the use of pole signs and encourage use of monument signs.
But it's an exist.
It's an existing sign, yes.
Mr. Peters, is a sidewalk required in front of us?
Community design standards require sidewalk everywhere. Yes, sir.
Well, if there's only five-foot buffer in the front, how big is a sidewalk?
No, that's a five-foot.
Well, I think we know from Sonic now that we probably won't get 12 feet from DOT. I suspect we're probably going to get four.
But.
There's a much larger buffer than five-foot. I've got.
It went from 15-foot to five-foot.
The five-foot buffer is on the northern side of the property.
It's not on our.
Correct.
Okay. And let me confuse.
If the board would like, I'll continue on through Mr. Peters.
Yes, please. Thank you.
What I'm, what I'll do is I'm going to start on page three, item number six, which lists the design waivers. There are a number of design waivers being requested by this application, and that's mostly due to the fact that a lot of the standards are for development of a larger raw piece of land as opposed to the expansion of an existing site, which is about 2.4 acres in size. But I will go through each one of them anyways. 6A indicates parking spaces shall not have direct access from public streets or major interior drives. We are asking for a waiver from providing secondary circulation aisles. We are going to maintain the existing front 25-foot wide circulation aisle in front of the building, a 25-foot, and carry that through to 25 feet across the proposed building. As indicated earlier, we're going to provide and widen the existing driveway to the north to 25 feet. We're actually going to provide a 38-foot wide drive aisle along the back of the existing and proposed building for approximately 2/3 of its length, which will provide access to the 40 by 80-foot roughly paved loading area to the new building or courtyard area, and then that will neck down to 25 feet and back out to White Street. So we are asking a waiver from that section. 6B indicates all main driveways into commercial and/or industrial areas shall be a minimum of 30 feet. On industrial and commercial applications, a 30-foot wide circulation aisle must be maintained for emergency purposes, whereas a 20, it says 26, it's actually a 25-foot wide access driveway exists along Route 9, a 25-foot access driveway is proposed along White Street, and a 25-foot wide circulation aisle is proposed. Again, I just discussed that. We're going to maintain the 25-foot wide aisle in front of the building and carry that through around the perimeter of the, both the existing and proposed building. We would ask for a waiver from that. We did submit a turning radius plan, which shows a tractor-trailer can negotiate through the site from Route 9, pull into the rear loading area, pull back out, and exit out through White Street, back out to Route 9. That also applies to garbage trucks and emergency vehicles. We feel that there's more than adequate space for the emergency vehicles to circulate the site as well as access to building if need be. 6C indicates parking lots shall be placed to the rear of the building or the side if the rear is not feasible. Again, the site's developed. It is a corner lot, so technically we have two frontages, one along Route 9 and one along Route, uh, White Street. The property's not large enough to provide all the required parking in the front yard, in the side and rear yard, so we are providing it in the front yard, which is an existing condition today. On to page four, letter D. It says, "In new developments, curbing shall be made of granite or equivalent. The board should determine whether concrete curb proposed is a granite equivalent." Again, there's concrete curb out there now. We're proposing to match the existing curbing. We would ask for that waiver. E indicates pedestrian sidewalks shall be a minimum of five-foot wide in, I'm sorry, five-foot wide in pedestrian areas and 12-foot wide in commercial areas, whereas a four-foot wide sidewalk is proposed along White Street frontage, and no sidewalk is proposed along the Route 9 frontage. We are proposing a four-foot sidewalk along White Street. I'd like to go over that a little bit later in the review report. We are asking for a waiver from providing sidewalk along Route 9. F indicates parking is prohibited within the front setback between the front of the building and the front property line. On-street parking is encouraged where feasible and appropriate. Obviously, on-street parking in this location is not feasible or appropriate, and I went through why we're parking within the front setback area for this property. Again, it's an existing developed site on a corner lot, and the parking, to provide the adequate amount of parking, needs to be in the front yard area. Going on to letter G, "Commercial parking spaces and/or associated drives shall be located a minimum of 50 feet from any side or rear property line, abutting a residential use, whereas plus or minus five feet is proposed to a driveway along Lot 36, which appears to contain a residential use." Lot 6 is the lot to our north, which is the mixed-use property we talked about before. We are widening the existing 15-foot wide driveway to 25-foot in width in this area, which is why it's approximately five foot off the property line, and we are asking for a waiver. H indicates a minimum of one deciduous shade tree shall be required for every five parking spaces within a six-foot square planting strip, diamond, or equivalent. Based on that calculation, we'd require 21 shade trees. We are proposing 16 shade trees. The additional five shade trees, as we discussed earlier, would be in the front location along Route 9. Ms. Thompson has addressed that already. I, J, and K.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but you're putting 16 trees inside the parking.
Inside, within the parking.
And now you're going to put trees on Route 9, is that, in the Route 9 area? I mean.
No, I think what he was saying was that.
Because I think that's what we're asking you to do.
The plan, what he was saying was the plan calls for 21, and, no, I'm sorry, the regulations call for 21, and we're proposing 16. Like I said, if we had to put them in because the board requires it, we will put them in, but I think it's a detriment to the site, not an asset to the site, to put trees out in front.
Well, of course, you don't have to put, you know, I can understand the trees out in front, but you are, you do have to provide 21 trees. That's beside the point. I mean, where you put them could be.
We'll comply with that, and we'll put the five trees somewhere as on-site, if not along that front parking bay. So we will comply with that.
Well, as I said, unless those five trees are put in the front on Route 9, I would not vote for the application personally. Mr. Chairman, maybe we should get a poll as to the opinion of the board on the trees on the front. With all due respect to Mr. Schneider, I do agree with Mr. Vizlaki. I think that's a detriment to the traffic going along Route 9. I mean, I've, I've seen where trees are, and it kind of blocks the sign, and you don't see where you are until you get right up on it.
I certainly agree with you, Mr. Burgess, but I don't agree with eliminating the trees. I believe the trees should be put somewhere on the property. 21 trees are required. We're trying, we're trying to maintain a character in that area in, on all Route 9. We're trying to upgrade the area. So while I agree with you as far as a blockage of site line along Route 9, I'm not inclined to reduce the number of trees that are required for this project.
I would agree to put the five trees somewhere else on-site.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to get some comment from the other board members regarding the trees. So, Mrs. Clark, your feelings?
Mr. Chairman, I feel that I'm satisfied that the 21 trees, provided that you have made that agreement. I think it's very important for the integrity. I think you've done a nice job, certainly in the architect and the drawings. I think it's important to have those 21 trees. I do not feel that it's necessary to have the trees in front of the building. I am satisfied with you putting them in other places in the site.
Ms. Castro?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to get some comment from the planner to see if there are any type of trees that could go on Route 9 that wouldn't, would not impair any site.
I would not recommend street trees on, you know, in the front area of Route 9, which could create a traffic hazard. I think the section of the ordinance that we're dealing with, quite frankly, is trees in the parking lot. You know, you're supposed to provide planters within the parking lot. They've represented that. They've provided 16 of the 21 required. I think that my recommendation would be to place the additional trees, if there's no additional room in the parking area, in the rear, in and around the basin perhaps, to provide additional screening from the residences in the back. But I think that the Route 9 corridor should, should be, the safety of the motorist should be your primary concern, and then the trees in the parking area and around the basin and the residential uses would be my recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just sort of to finish the discussion about looking for along Route 9, remember in other areas, like if we have a shopping center, and it's on a side street or it's near a residential area, we often want the parking spaces to have a hedge up in front of them, two and a half, three feet high, to block headlight glare. Now, understanding the applicant's wish to leave well enough alone with the nice existing lawn that's out front, you may want to consider that there are parking spaces that are going to face out into Route 9, and perhaps a hedge row is the common ground between all of the opinions that we've heard here this evening.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good suggestion, Ernie, and I concur, I agree with that.
I believe the plan calls for that.
Laura came up with it.
Good suggestion, Laura.
Good job. The plan does call for a hedge row that's.
Along the.
That's not along Route 9. That's along the northern.
No, it's also along the westerly parking bank, parallel to Route 9. The plan shows a hedge row there now.
Not out at the street, right in front of the parking spaces.
Okay. Parking stalls. They're going to put a hedge row.
Okay. I still, we're still, we're still going to get to 21 trees, though.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to make comment on this tree issue, Mr. Tantillo?
No, I believe the hedge row would be fine in the front, and I believe the 21 trees should be put in. It's required. We should have them.
Mr. Frazi?
I'm happy with 21 trees, and they don't have to be in the front. Actually, going to take away from the building. It's a nice, you know, architecturally done building, and the trees would actually take away from that, I believe.
Okay. Okay, continue.
Jumping to letter I, J, and K, they're all architectural items. I'll let the architect address those.
In I, no wall shall have a blank uninterrupted length exceeding 50 feet without including a revealed pilaster, change of texture, color, or material, change in plane, window, lattice, or equivalent element. I think we've satisfied that part of this requirement. However, the roof line offsets shall be provided along any roof measuring longer than 75 feet. Well, on the White Street side, we have, along the top of the building, we have 120 feet, and I think on the Route 9 side, we have 100 feet. We could satisfy that part of the ordinance by popping up the building here or there, but we thought architecturally it worked better if we left it flat. So if the board preferred, we could pop it up somewhere and meet that 75-foot requirement, but I think we'd like to leave the building as designed. In J, "Developments with facades over 50 feet in length shall incorporate wall projections or recesses a minimum of three feet in depth and shall extend over 10% of the facade." I think we take care of that with the covered walkway underneath the building there on the White Street side. And then in K, "Flat roofs are generally discouraged. However, they may be considered for buildings at least two stories in height if articulated cornice or parapet is provided," which we do. We, we will provide a detailed parapet around the whole, or cornice, rather, around the whole second floor of that building.
Where are the mechanicals going to be for this building?
They'll be on the roof. They'll be screened.
Will they be screened from view?
Yes.
Okay.
Continue on page four. I'll jump to item number seven, which are the discussion items that Ernie was looking forward to. 7A is the overall operations of the site. I believe Mrs. Thompson discussed that. If there's other questions that the board has, you can answer those.
What are the hours?
The, some of the staff arrives at 8:00 in the morning. I have a buyer. He gets there at 8:00, and the rest of the staff generally, the store is open from 10:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. That's Monday through Friday. Saturdays, it opens earlier, opens up at 9:00, closes up at 8:00 at night, and on Sundays, opens 10:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night.
Thank you.
Continuing on to item B, "The accessibility of the loading area as well as the refuse area." We propose two loading areas and two refuse areas. For the existing building, the loading and refuse areas on the east side or backside of the building is accessed from the 38-foot wide circulation aisle. For the proposed addition, the loading area is the 40 by roughly 80-foot paved courtyard area with the refuse enclosure just to the northeast or just right-hand corner of the proposed building, and again, is accessed from that 38-foot wide circulation aisle.
And they're enclosed, the refuge areas are enclosed, or have some kind of concrete?
They're enclosed, yes.
Okay.
C says, or asks us to discuss, "The nature improvements proposed along White Street and the subsequent need for additional grading detail along Seame, specifically at the low point at elevation 130.09 within the right-of-way just east of the subject property. There is a natural low spot within the right-of-way as well as onto adjacent tax lot 34, which stormwater from our site as well as other sites actually drain in a southeasterly direction to this low spot, collect for some time, and then bubble over Route White Street." In the proposed condition, once our detention basin is built, for the two 10 and 100-year storm, we'll actually reduce the flows to that area, and for the two and 10-year storm, we'll actually reduce the volume or the amount of water that gets to that area. As we discussed earlier, because the basin does contain the two-year storm event and recharge it back into the ground, we're actually discharging less water to that area post-development. There is a slight increase in the 100-year storm. We have done test pits out in this area. The soils are sandy. It's our position that there's not a drainage problem there now. It does percolate back into the ground, and it will continue to do so post-development. But we'll actually make the situation better by adding the detention basin than what currently exists.
Mr. Chairman, our concern is that while the existing low point isn't on the applicant's property, and it is along White Street, there is an area of White Street pavement widening, and the entrance off of White Street that will drain unretained. The water that falls out of the sky that hits the asphalt's going to run to this area, so we're concerned that additional volume of water is going to run to that area. And at a minimum, there should be some methodology, whether we put in a storm sewer inlet that's just a sump, like you often see out in Ocean County or the Pine Lands, some effort so that the increase in stormwater runoff from the very small amount of impervious surface, it's not being caught by their detention basin, some effort to ameliorate along White Street, which, once you get past this site, is a residential area. We're not looking for them to redesign the entire project. I think this is a, sort of a good faith gesture in, in terms of making sure that White Street doesn't have a flooding problem that could be after construction. If someone's going to say if it's a nickel worse than it is right now, they're going to point at this project.
We're not opposed to installing a yard drain within the right-of-way, which would act as a sump to collect that water, recharge it back into the ground.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continue on to E, "The adequacy of refuse enclosures as well as provisions for mandated recyclable materials. In accordance with the section of the ordinance, a separate storage area must be provided."
Bless you.
To provide and to accommodate a one-to-four week accumulation of recyclable materials. The applicant had submitted a memo outlining the refuse and waste needs. They currently utilize two trash dumpsters at the property and anticipate the need for two more, which is what we're proposing for the proposed building. So the applicant has represented that there's adequate trash provided on the proposed.
Bob, I think you skipped D.
I skipped D?
Yeah, you did.
I apologize.
It's all right.
D is whether any outdoor storage or goods displayed would be permitted. In addition, the applicant shall clarify whether outdoor storage of vehicles will be permitted. There's no overnight storage or display of goods proposed as part of this operation. no overnight storage or display of goods proposed as part of this operation. There may be some daytime display within the, in front of the building of some sporting goods equipment, but there's no overnight storage or display of goods proposed. Ensignment Sports does have one box truck that utilizes for delivery of equipment at night. That box truck will be stored in the paved loading courtyard area overnight.
Okay, but I think the, um, the comment was not whether any goods would be displayed at night, it's whether any goods would be displayed. There's two comments.
We asked...
Whether any outdoor storage or goods displayed would be permitted, period, and in addition, the applicant to clarify whether any outdoor storage of vehicles will be permitted overnight. So it's two separate questions.
We don't use any kind of outdoor storage like a garden center. We do have, twice a year, we get a permit from the town and do a tent sale. So it is twice a year there is display of merchandise outside, but it's not a storage per se like a lumberyard.
And that would be, have to be permitted. You should have to get a permit from the code enforcement.
We do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted, if you drive by the site, you're familiar with it. Occasionally, there's equipment outside during the day on the sidewalk under the overhang. So from that perspective, I didn't want code enforcement, who does their job very well, to come out and say, "It wasn't in this approval." So from that perspective, I want them to get what they want. They want to add on the building, and I don't want them to have an issue with code enforcement about if they put during business hours some of their equipment outside for advertisement purposes. We just want to make sure it's clear in our resolution, so there's no concern when they go to get their CO, when they go to open up the addition.
I just want to make a comment is that today, as I was coming home from work, I drove past your establishment, and there were weight benches outside on the sidewalk.
Yeah, every once in a while, we'll put the training devices out for the kids to try, or we'll put the weight benches out or something on the sidewalk.
That, that's what we were asking though before, and you said that there's two, like two or three occasions where you get a permit for a tent sale.
Right.
That doesn't sound like this is one of them.
No, no, this is, every once in a while, we'll set up, like, the kids use these big throwback.
Well, this goes to what Mr. Peters was saying, that if you're gonna do it, we just want to have it memorialized properly, because without Mr. Vislacki's comment, all I would have written was two or three times a year, you're gonna have a tent sale subject to a permit.
I think it's the applicant's intention to, on occasion, in addition to the tent sale, display a couple pieces of equipment outside in the front sidewalk area. I don't know if we can quite quantify a number of days, but it's periodically.
Even if it's on a regular basis, I think it should just be clarified what you want so you get what you want while you're here, so that there's no confusion, and we don't have to come back here for, you heard Sonic came back because you couldn't get him a twelve-foot wide sidewalk. We don't want to, well, we like having you here, we don't want you to have to come back for things we forget to talk about.
However, there, there has been some discussion, I guess, at, I'm not sure at the council level, but I've known in the past about vendors putting merchandise outside and how it's become unsightly in some areas as, so I'm not sure, you know, what's the take on that? Something that we want to continue as a practice in the township, or something that's not? I, I mean, I would have to...
I think the key here might be that every night, that stuff is brought in, so it doesn't have the chance to become unsightly.
I understand that, and I'm not disputing that. It's just that there has been some comments in the, in the past, and I know Councilwoman Dalton is not here, so I would like to know if any, if that's been addressed by the council, or if that's just, because I've known, I've heard this numerous times of, you know, tent sales, human billboards, and all this other stuff going on that becomes unsightly, and we don't want to continue a trend that might be, we're trying to stop or discontinue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the consistency I was looking for in the discussion was that if any of you go down to Kmart on Route 9 at Friendship Road, every weekend, they have a sidewalk sale. And because it's on the sidewalk, no one says anything. Problem is, there's a thirty-foot access drive that accesses the rest of the project, which is unsafe to some extent. So code enforcement has sort of cracked down on the sidewalk sale, making sure that the material's up against the wall, people can walk back and forth, and they can have a cash register outside. In this case, up against their sidewalk is parking spaces, so it's much less intense in terms of vehicles and pedestrians going back and forth. But as Mr. Vislacki says, we don't have a rule that says A or B, it's just outdoor storage, outdoor sales. So to that end, if the applicant explains correctly what they're asking for, and we find that to be satisfactory, as Ron said, we can memorialize it in the resolution. But I have seen in instances where code enforcement's gone out based upon complaints on larger-scale projects, and the only reconciliation we have is that our ordinance says outdoor sales of materials, or outdoor sales of goods, I'm sorry. I mean...
Home Depot, Lowe's, everybody has stuff out there, so I mean, not opposed to that. I just want to make sure that we're not continuing a trend that's trying to be discouraged in the town. I don't know what the correct answer is.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think, Ron, in January, they passed ordinance one eighty-eight, sixty-eight, this outdoor display of goods, and maybe you could touch on that in the HD?
Well, it's, it's, this is where we're going with it. It is permitted, as so long as those requirements are satisfied. Where I wanted to go with it also is just, also just a confirmation of where it was gonna happen, because I didn't want to see that any parking spaces were gonna be lost due to outdoor display of goods, you know, some, sometimes vehicles are brought in for these things. So I just wanted to make sure that we were just understood where the, the activity was gonna happen in the confines of the ordinance to make sure that additional relief, you know, would not be triggered. Where you place it, you know, if you place it too close to a property line, it could trigger, you know, the need for setback variances and things like that. So we want to make sure that what you're doing is within your, you know, your building envelope and not, you know, encumbering parking spaces or creating additional relief.
Well, what there is, is we have a very large overhang and a very large sidewalk between the glass windows and where the parking lot actually starts. And occasionally, we'll put a lacrosse set out there, or, you know, weight benches like you saw today, but it's not anything more than four or five pieces. What is most typical is we have these, we call them pitchbacks. It's a big net, and the kids like to throw the ball, and it bounces back, and they get to try it outdoors as opposed to in the store wrecking everything. So it's typically something set up on the sidewalk.
Mr. Chairman, what I'm gonna say about it is, you know, I think that is okay as a concept in our ordinance. I'm not gonna opine on, you know, the current condition as to whether that would have required a permit or not to have the weight equipment out there, but it's gonna be pursuant to our ordinance requirements, and if a permit is required, then you're gonna have to get a permit for that outside display.
Exactly. We now have an ordinance, so I would recommend that the applicant review the ordinance and comply with the ordinance, and if permits are gonna be required to put pitchbacks outside, then you're gonna have to comply with the ordinance, or you may have an issue, or you will have an issue. So please review the ordinance and comply with it.
What are the safety ramifications of kids playing out in the parking lot?
I think that's an issue for the applicant and their insurance company.
Yeah, but as a board, we're, we're supposed to consider it before somebody gets hurt and sues.
Well, no, no, we're not, we're not to consider whether they're gonna be sued by a patron or not. What we can say is, you know, we shouldn't be, you know, throwing the football on the access aisles, or, you know, we shouldn't be, you know, practicing, you know, with the swimming equipment in the detention pond, you know, whatever it is that's...
No scuba diving in the detention pond.
Yeah, some, some things like that. I mean, if it's gonna interfere with internal circulation and create a safety problem, I think Mr. Schneider's right. It is, it is within our jurisdiction.
But the ordinance, the ordinance addresses that, so, the ordinance addresses safety issues, so if they're complying with the ordinance...
Well, I think the, the ordinance addresses the outdoor display of goods. It doesn't address...
Are you sure?
Hmm?
Go ahead.
I don't think it, it addresses kids running around the parking lot necessarily.
It doesn't address kids running around the parking lot.
Right. But if they're, if, if the testimony tonight is that, yeah, on a regular basis, we're gonna have kids running around the parking lot while cars are coming in off Route 9, then I want Mr. Schneider. That's probably something that we should be, be looking at, but I don't think that's what you're saying tonight.
No, not at all. There's occasionally, you know, for example, if a kid is interested in buying a baseball bat, they're very often very expensive. It's not unusual for a kid to be buying a three-hundred-dollar bat. Well, his father wants to take him outside and let him swing as opposed to standing in the store letting it swing. It's, it's that type of thing where merchandise is taken outdoors, but it's not, I mean, they're not outside playing roller hockey in my parking lot. It's not anything like that.
Continuing on, I'll go to letter F.
Yes.
Letter F indicates or asks the method, either by deed or plat, of following the lot consolidation for lots thirty-five and thirty-five point zero one. We will file a deed to consolidate the two lots. G is the adequacy of screening provided to adjacent residential uses. Our office notes that the applicant has requested a variance from providing the required fifty-foot wide buffer. Our office recommends that at a minimum, the board consider requiring the dense evergreens and deciduous shrubs be provided along the existing wood line. We've actually met twice on this site where Mr. Panic, and we'll work with him as well as Mr. Peters' office to provide any additional landscaping that we agree upon.
Well, you would work directly with Mr. Peters' office.
Okay.
And he will, and his office is, I'm sure, Mr. Peters, your office has reviewed these...
Yes, sir, previous comments, previous plans, and a visit out to the site.
Okay, thank you.
H is the nature of facade signage proposed. I will defer to the architect to address the signage proposing on his facades.
We are proposing some signage on the building, and we will conform with the ordinance, with whatever we do there.
Okay. Going on to letter I, the ability to preserve, preserve some of the existing trees along White Street. I'd like to get that, get into that a little bit later in the report, 'cause it's mentioned there again, and I will cover it then.
Okay.
J is the availability of public water service within the site vicinity. The site is served by an existing well. We're proposing to continue to utilize the existing well. We've submitted a preliminary application to the MUD or Municipal Utilities Department, and they've approved the preliminary and indicated tentative and final is not required. K is the status of the NJ DOT access permit. We've submitted an application to the DOT. We received back, or received back the permit for us to sign. We've signed it, sent it to the DOT, and is waiting for the countersign permit back.
When did you send the signed permit to the DOT?
We sent it about a week and a half, two weeks ago. I do have a copy of the permit that they sent to us, if you'd like.
Don't need a copy to show me now, I just want to know when you sent it.
Okay. L is the need for restriction noting the proposed second floor of the building will be utilized for storage purposes only. We're not objecting to that, and we'll do that. M and N are general statements regarding the general ordinance standards. I believe we've covered most of, if not all of those, in previous testimony. Letter O is compliance with the uniform growth-based affordable housing production, production correct, and we will comply with whatever affordable housing requirement is in place. P is compliance with the Monmouth, Western Monmouth Development Plan. As it appears that the subject site is included within same, it should be noted that the Western Monmouth Development Plan is a study plan intended as a guide to produce a smart growth plan for the study area and especially along the Route 9 corridor. Recommendations included therein which could possibly be incorporated into the site include pedestrian sidewalks along Route 9 and pedestrian and/or vehicle, vehicular interconnection between the adjoining sites. The adjoining site to our north is the mixed residential commercial use we've talked about. If and when it ever gets developed for commercial purposes, we could interconnect with them through the proposed thirty-eight-foot-wide rear circulation aisle, and at that time, we could also provide a pedestrian interconnection if required and needed. At this point, there's really nothing to interconnect to, and providing at this point is unnecessary. Going on to item eight, it lists the outside agency approvals that are required for this application. I'll go through them quickly with the board. A is the Monmouth County Planning Board. We received approval from the board on November thirteenth of last year. The Monmouth County Health Department, in their letter of May twelfth of this year, had two benign comments as it relates to the abandonment of the existing septic system when we do in fact connect to the public system, which we will comply with. Regarding letter C, which is the Frilled Soil Conservation District, they approved our application on January eighteenth of this year. D is the NJ DOT access and drainage permit, and as I indicated, we are going to have that in a short period of time. E is an NJ DEP letter of interpretation. That application is pending with the DEP. We don't believe there's any freshwater wetlands on or adjacent to this property. The DEP IMAP website doesn't show any wetlands on or adjacent to this property, and we filed a letter of presence-absence application with the DEP. Howell Township Municipal Utilities Department, as I indicated earlier, we have preliminary water approval and no tentative and final are required. We have submitted a preliminary sewer application, and it came back with we need to submit a final sewer application. We will do that pending approval of this application. Continue on to letter J, the Howell Township Shade Tree Commission. Just give me a second to thumb through. We received a letter from them dated November twenty-first of last year. Their comment was to need to preserve more large trees. Again, I'll go over that when we go over the White Street improvements a little bit later. H is the Howell Township Environmental Commission. They issued a letter dated April eleventh of this year with two comments. The first comment notes that we're going for variance from the landscape buffer, and two again says preserve existing trees along White Street that are sixteen inches in diameter or greater, and again, I'll go over that in a little bit. I is the Howell Township Police Department. To date, I don't have any comments from the Howell Township Police Department. And J, the Howell Township Bureau of Fire Prevention, they had one comment. It says driveway into and about complex needs to be thirty feet wide to accommodate use and placement of emergency vehicles. As I indicated earlier, we are widening the fifteen-foot-wide driveway to our north. We're providing a twenty-five-foot-wide circulation aisle around the entire building. Along the rear two-thirds of the existing and proposed building, that rear circulation aisle is actually thirty-eight feet in width and provides access to a forty-by-eighty-foot paved loading courtyard area. So it's our position that we have more than adequate circulation through the site and access to and from the building. That takes us through the outside agency approvals and jumps us to the Technical Engineering Review Number Two, which is dated March twentieth of this year. There's only two items within that technical review that I'd like to go over, everything else we agreed to comply with. Two items are on page two, where the first one's on page two. It's E1A, which is under Woodland Management, and it says, "It appears that there are five, not five, large trees to be removed along White Street for the proposed sidewalk. Our office recommends eliminating the sidewalk, providing a meandering sidewalk along White Street," and then it goes on to recommend different species of trees. The applicant's not opposed to removing the sidewalk. We can't provide a meandering sidewalk along White Street, 'cause there's just not enough room between the proposed widening and the existing street and our proposed curb to meander the sidewalk. It's up to the board whether they want us to provide the sidewalk or not provide the sidewalk and the road widening to, to keep and maintain those four existing trees which are of large size.
Can I ask a question? Your existing parking spaces right now, the way the store is situated, do you ever have an issue with parking? Do you ever have your parking lot full?
The only time we've ever, on Saturdays, I have my employees park in the back, and at Christmas, I went out there one time, and there were only five spots left out front, and that was the closest, I was so excited, we were so busy. That was the closest we ever came to having the parking lot full.
The reason I ask this too is, I just feel sometimes we're very aggressive in this township with parking, and a lot of our lots tend to be empty, and this could also address some of the buffer issues. I wonder, I know our ordinance requires a certain amount of parking spaces, but I'd rather grant a waiver to eliminate parking spaces in order to have the proper buffers, and I don't know if that's, what's that?
That won't help you here, though.
I don't know. I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not gonna comment on that, but I'm just saying...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Respectfully, the applicant's engineer put forth their position. You scale down the project, you get rid of parking spaces. There are any number of ways. You can put an eraser on the plan and meander the sidewalk, other than just leaving what's on the development portion of the project and saying, "We can't fix anything else." We can fix it, we can move things around on the, on the site. So again, it...
I'm just saying, do we need that, I mean, I know our ordinance requires a certain amount of parking per square foot, and I'm wondering, I don't know the answer to this. I'm looking to the professionals. Is, are we over-exaggerating the parking for this particular application? And that's my question.
The ordinance requires a hundred and three parking stalls, and that's what we're providing. Whether you're gonna ask whether a hundred and three are needed, as Mrs. Thompson's indicated, she's never actually been full, so probably not.
Yeah, so, I mean... Yeah, so I mean, that's just my train of thought on that.
As I say, if you want, we could bank parking that if it's needed, we can construct it at a later date.
I'm just looking, because I was going to tell you right now, my main concerns about this application is the residential buffer to the east. I mean, maybe the north, not so much, but I don't know. I wait till, I'll wait my decision until I hear a public comment. But I'm just real concerned about encroaching on that fifty-foot buffer. I just don't feel comfortable about affecting somebody's quality of life, that's all. And that's just my personal opinion. But again, after public comment, I'll make a determination. So I mean, I believe it's a good project. I believe it's excellent, you know, design. I'm just trying to see how we could do it in a way that meets the ultimate goal and to protect the residents and to encourage growth of our commercial areas, you know? And if excessive parking is something that's hindering this, then maybe we should look at trying to eliminate excessive parking.
We have a seven-foot-wide buffer on the east side. Is that correct?
We have a seven-foot-wide natural east buffer on the east side, correct. I mean, there is, again, after development, it's going to be over fifty feet wide of green area that's going to be landscaped. It's going to have a depression where the stormwater detention basin is. There's no building. It's more land disturbance and grading than it is building activity happening in that buffer. And again, we do propose to landscape it intensely to provide a visual barrier to those residents.
But you also warrant it putting the buffer in, putting the detention basin in the buffer, which I don't think we've ever had before. And whether or not this board has ever granted an application with that.
I agree. It's probably a little unique and that's, you know, we got a little creative for the development of the site. It meets all the setbacks and the impervious coverage of the zone by this design. We got a little creative. And it's our opinion that once the site is built and constructed, it'll actually look nice with the landscaping within that rear fifty-foot area and it will be green.
If I'm not mistaken, we've approved that before. Was it that, a site?
Not a detention basin in the buffer.
Didn't we have a detention basin on, was it around Newton's Corner Road, Lakewood-Alenwood Road that they had a development, Ernie?
That's taking up time, so we can...
Well, I can take some time, Mr. Vislacki.
I think we want to, I think we want to look at the merits of this application in and of itself rather than if we've ever approved one before. I mean, if it warrants, you know, on this piece of property to put the retention basin in the buffer, then so be it.
Yeah, but my question is that was stated that it's never happened before. And I'm saying that we have approved detention basins before in a buffer.
Okay.
I'd like to get back to the trees because I think that's ultimately where we started here. And I'm certainly interested in saving those trees along White Street. I'm looking at some reports from our past tree expert that also notes that there's sidewalk across the way on Wawa. So I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, but my pleasure would be to save those trees along White Street.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree.
I'm saying if you eliminate the parking spaces on that end right there, could the sidewalk be put in and save the trees?
If we eliminated the parking stalls, then we could provide a sidewalk onsite through an easement and save those trees, yes.
How many parking spaces are on that side?
Yeah, how many would we eliminate? Because that's definitely a good compromise.
Has nineteen parking stalls within it.
Nineteen.
And that actually, not to take us off topic, but the next comment within CME's report is there is an existing tree within that same parking bank that they would like to save, which would require us to take three parking stalls out. So if the board would like, we could space bank those, not construct the parking stalls, save the trees, put the sidewalk in. If down the road, it becomes necessary for those parking stalls, well then that answers your question and the trees need to come down for those parking stalls.
In other words, the town would have in their pocket a plan that could show adequate parking based upon the parking requirements. Would simply require if these trees become past mature and for some reason dead, dying, diseased, and we find, whether change of use or not, we need the parking spaces, we could go back. But we'd have an approved plan in our pocket that says we can fit this many. In this particular case, we could green bank a few of them.
And we wouldn't be opposed to doing that.
I mean, I think that's a great compromise. Any other comments from any board members? Do you think that's a good workaround for this?
I would agree.
It's, again, I think it's a good workaround. But the buffering, I'm also thinking about the parking spots along the west side of the property. I mean, I don't know how many spots there are and I'm sure that's not going to be customer parking. It's more employee parking, I would think. I don't know how many employee spots you require. But could those also be green banked as well?
Mr. Chair, just before we get into that, I want to express the same reservation I have about green banking that I express in every application. We're here and we're here now and we say it's going to be green banked. Then we don't come here anymore. There's no trigger as to when these things are going to be retrieved from the green bank or who's going to make that determination. That has to come out of the green bank. So I'm never quite sure what the difference is when we say we're green banking versus we're saying we're just not going to require those spaces.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. If, maybe it shouldn't be green banked. Maybe we not require them. And if they do need additional space, they have to come back before the board to get the spaces.
What I'm saying is who makes that decision? If, I'm going to tell you right now, if I'm an applicant's attorney, I'm going to tell my client, you're never making that decision. You're never coming back to that board. You know, this board or any board. It's not any board in particular.
I guess the traffic safety.
I think that's more of an inspection issue from the town that they're getting complaints or they're noticing that there's always no parking, that the town would...
You can't point to me any section of our ordinance, any section of the municipal land use law, any jurisdiction that any one person has at all to say, all right, you have now gotten yourself into a situation where you need those green banked parking spaces. And until, and maybe I'm wrong, until somebody shows me who that guy is that makes that determination, I can't recommend to the board with any certainty that this is going to happen. And you know, that there's some mechanism to accomplish this once it leaves here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ernie, I'm disappointed not that Shari or your other certified tree expert is not here because I really think that I need their expert testimony on this application.
As it relates to?
As it relates to the trees for preservation, as it relates to whether or not we could plant ornamental trees on Route Nine to enhance the beauty of Route Nine and such.
Well, we've listed those recommendations. So their opinion is in the report, but certainly if the board would like to hear from them, we're not happy to drag them out and... As it relates to the five trees on White Street, there's a recommendation. It becomes a policy decision to the board. If you keep those trees because of their high canopy, you can plant underneath them. As it relates to Route Nine, the idea of street trees or deciduous trees really is a policy issue for the board. The ordinance says you shall provide street trees, all right, everywhere, residential, commercial. It says what we have to do. So if the board finds sufficient testimony from the applicant to sustain that, we'll grant them relief. I thought we'd started, I thought we'd gotten to the point where we're talking about a small, less than three-foot-high hedgerow long parking area in the front. And now we're sort of stuck on what to do on White Street to save those older trees and perhaps that one sweet gum. And the last issue I believe we were dealing with was in the back where the stormwater management facility is almost on the property line. So I thought we sort of segregated this into three separate issues, but one of them was resolved.
Mr. Chair.
I have a comment. I believe we resolved the front of the Route Nine issue and I think that Mr. Schneider, correct me if I'm wrong, it was just stating an opinion that he would have liked to have testimony of the tree expert from CME. I don't think that we were revisiting the issue on Route Nine. I think we're at the point right now where we're talking about the trees on White Street and the one sweet gum that's in the parking lot. And we had a proposal to, for lack of a better word, I know that Mr. Kachara doesn't like it, green bank those parking spaces. So that's on the floor right now. Do we think that's a good idea?
Mr. Chairman.
Do we want to face these issues one at a time? Yes, Jim?
I just want to direct the board's attention to the parking issue. If we remove the parking spaces on the southerly property line to allow for the preservation of trees and the meandering sidewalk, and then we remove the parking spaces in the rear, we're bringing this site down to fifty-eight parking spaces. And then, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Vislacki, if the intent was to eliminate those rear parking spaces and move the basin farther from the property line, that's not really a green bank. That's really an elimination.
No, no, I understand. But I'm just saying, I'm just wondering, what constitutes excessive parking? I don't know the answer to that, you know? And what warranted, what is adequate parking and what isn't adequate parking? I guess I don't have the answer to that question. I think our, based on history of this township, we have an excessive parking ordinance where we have too much parking that never seems to be filled. So where, this is my frustration is, what's adequate parking? I don't know. Nobody's been able to tell me what's adequate parking.
It's a hard answer to a question to answer because it's a site-specific, case-by-case situation. With regards to green banking, it's almost like a self-imposed type of limitation. If Ms. Thompson has a retail store that she's filled with parking every day and can't get any more customers in there, she's going to build that parking because she wants to get more people in her store.
Exactly.
So it's almost self-imposed in that if she needs it, she will build it. If she doesn't need it, then she'll never build it. And that's kind of the idea behind the green banking.
How far back does the property go after the infiltration basin?
We grade up to approximately five to seven feet of the property line. Again, the infiltration basin is just dirt and grass that's graded into a depression. So it's not an actual structure. But it goes, the top of the basin's about, I'd say about seven feet off the property line.
That's always going to be dry back there, right?
It'll be dry, I'm going to say ninety-nine percent of the time. When it rains, it will hold water for up to twenty-one hours using the factor of safety at two until it drains dry and recharges the ground. Most of the time, it will be dry.
How much footage you have after it?
From what, the elevation as to where, oh.
Roughly.
Give me a... Roughly. The bottom of the basin is approximately eighteen feet off the property line. So call it fifteen feet to play it safe.
And you propose to put trees behind it?
Correct. We're proposing to landscape that whole backside on top and along the side of the slope.
That'll buffer all the people in the back.
Correct.
How deep is the basin?
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet deep?
No, it's not eighteen feet deep.
No, not deep.
The bottom of the basin is at elevation one-twenty-nine and at the back edge along that common property line, it's one-thirty-two and a half. So it's roughly three and a half feet deep along that common property line.
Three and a half feet deep. So we will buffer those people. Those people won't be bothered that on that property.
Correct. And don't forget, their house is approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet from our property line, of which two-hundred feet roughly is...
You got to understand, we're tree nuts. We want, the more trees, the better.
No problem.
Again, I'm going to wait until public comment to see if there's anybody that lives in that area, has a concern, so.
Okay, so again, I'm trying to hit each issue on point. Are we agreeing to green bank the parking spaces along White Street so that we can save those trees? Save the tree that's in the corner of the parking space?
By green banking, we will save that tree as well.
And meander the sidewalk. At that point, you'll be able to meander the sidewalk.
We'll be able to meander the sidewalk. It's up to the board whether they want sidewalk on both sides, both sides of White Street, or we can just eliminate the sidewalk altogether and not meander it. It's up to the board.
Mr. Chair, could we hold off on that decision until after public comment? I'd like to hear if there's any public concern.
We can hold off on that decision, but I want to move this testimony along. So we have to, we have to come to some kind of agreement so that we can move on to the next point.
Mr. Chairman, is there...
We're not opposed to that.
Okay.
Is there sidewalk, any other sidewalks on White Street?
Yes, across the street, Wawa.
Just across the street. If you continue east down White Street, there's no sidewalk.
That's what I'm saying. So is that really necessary?
Probably a sidewalk on one side is probably adequate.
We can, I mean, I don't have an issue. I'm fine with eliminating the sidewalk, to be quite honest with you. I'm more concerned with preserving the trees.
Right. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
But we'd all, it's my opinion that we'd also need to not widen White Street. We're proposing to widen White Street and install curb along that frontage. And that some of those pavement widening and curb areas are going to be pretty close to the existing tree.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We've gone over this at professionals' meetings.
I figured you had.
If the applicant's going to come to the public hearing with a set of plans and then say, "We don't want to do it," I think we need to stop the hearing, we need to go locate the trees out in the field and make a real determination as to what fits in there and what doesn't.
Okay.
Because honestly, we weren't told this at the professionals' meeting. I'm not prepared to comment as to whether or not widening the road in accordance with the municipal master plan is going to kill these trees. It was, this is the first we've heard of it. Quite frankly, I'm a little taken aback because I'm not prepared to comment on it because we didn't go out and start measuring whether or not these trees would be negatively impacted by putting the widening in. We were assumed after the professionals' meeting that we were going to get the widening along White Street.
Well, I don't completely agree with that. The trees are located on our plan. They are shown. And it's by Mr. Peters' recommendation to eliminate some improvements to keep those trees. We came to the board to leave it up to you. We'll widen the road, install the curb and sidewalk because that's what's required by the town. If the town says no, we want to save the trees and don't widen the street and put the sidewalk in, that's fine with us, too. We're willing to move forward with the plan as presented. It's based on the recommendations that have been made that we're willing to negotiate, not negotiate, but willing to do whatever the board wants to do. And that's the only reason why we don't have two sets of plans with us.
Mr. Chairman, I totally agree with Ernie. I have all the, as a member of the Shade Tree Commission for many years, I have all the confidence of our certified tree expert, Shari, and the other people that work with her. I would like to adjourn this until we get her complete report and opinion on this.
Didn't she give us a report?
I think we have.
Yeah, I'd be in agreement with that. So Mr. Peters will be, will have the information he needs and be able to answer.
Mr. Peters?
Sir.
So this was never discussed in a professionals' conference?
The extent to which whether or not we're going to lose trees because of the widening. I mean, we could take fifteen minutes, go to another application. Rob and I could drive over there and figure it out.
No, we're not, we're certainly not going to do that. And we're not going to, and we're not going to move forward unless you know exactly what we're going to be doing.
Well, can I make a suggestion in that we amend our application and get preliminary today? Me and Ernie can work out the tree, the road widening and the tree locations and come back and address that one issue during final.
I'm uncomfortable unless we know, working it out, I have to kind of know what we're, what the product's going to be. It can't be worked out and then we don't, the board doesn't know how it's going to be worked out when it comes back on final.
Well, it'll either be widening or not widening White Street.
Yeah, well, they get to decide that, not, not Mr. Peters and you.
Right. So that's, I mean, we do show them on our plans. They are here. Again, it's, I mean, it's my opinion that some of those trees can be saved and some of them will need to come down as part of the road widening.
I understand that, but that's not, that's not exactly what's, we want to know what's going to be saved and what's not going to be saved. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
No, I can appreciate that.
You know, at this point.
And Mr. Chairman, I keep reiterating, I believe that Route Nine, when there are trees on Route Nine, changes the look and beautifies Route Nine. And I really would like our certified tree expert, Shari, to give us a recommendation of the type of species and perhaps that it could be planted on Route Nine without a detriment to site improvements or anything else. So that's another issue. I still would like to see our certified tree expert report on that. I would not be satisfied unless I saw that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would just say this. It's not fair to the applicant, however, if we send them away without a clear direction to go in. And what I hear is that what we're asking them to do is work with the professionals to save as many trees as possible. And to the extent that means the elimination of the sidewalk, you know, the board is willing to look at that as well as... the sidewalk, you know, the board is willing to, to look at that as well as, you know, the, the green banking option, so at least.
I think we're, that's exactly what we want.
Okay, so at least as, as an applicant, you understand, you know, what, what the goal is that the board has set down.
But we also want to know what trees are going to have to be eliminated in the event of road widening. So, that's the direction that we want you to go in, in, with our profession. We want you to meet, come back, present to us what trees are going to be eliminated if we have the road widening, and then we want to be able to make that decision based on that new information.
Mr. Chair, also, isn't it, if we don't green bank those southern parking spots, we're going to have to eliminate a, a tree as well, correct?
We would have to eliminate that tree, yes.
Well, I think that's what Mr. Chairman was saying, we just want to know the implications of either, either option, or whatever options are out there on the table.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, we've looked at the, the agenda, and obviously, it's subject to, you know, the time that the applicant needs to, to do this. But our September 18th meeting has the Snyder application on at the moment, that's the only application, so that's an, an open night. We also have our professional review conferences on the first Tuesday of every month, so you have an opportunity to come in and, and meet with the board's professionals at that time, at least we all know will be available, but I'm sure even if you can't, you know, you know, some accommodation can be made for you.
Okay. Let me see if the dates are working.
Is it, is it possible we could handle the public comment and at least get through anything as far as Mr. Doran is concerned, so we wouldn't have to bring him back?
You can have your public comment, but it's still going to be reopened to public comment again, so.
That's fine. Mr. Chair, I think, I think what counsel is saying is, the issues that you've raised have nothing to do with architecture. So, if the public wanted to, if you wanted to let the public cross-examine the architect, the applicant wouldn't have to bring the architect back next time, it would only be a planner and engineer.
That's fine. Well, do we have a date, though, before?
Well, if it's okay with everyone, the 18th of September.
Okay. Before we open up to the public, Mr. Nacastro had a comment.
Mr. Chair, just before we adjourned it, we didn't go over clarification on Page 4, Section D and E with the sidewalks on Route 9. That's usually a sticking point for us. We, we've been consistently asking all the applicants on Route 9 to provide the sidewalks on, on Route 9, so we didn't get to that, if we want to deal with that now.
Well, I thought we, I, I thought we talked about sidewalks on Route 9.
No, only White Street.
Only, unless I missed it.
They're asking for a waiver.
They asked for a waiver.
They're asking for a waiver for sidewalks on Route 9.
Well, I'm not inclined to grant that waiver.
I'm not comfortable.
We haven't, we haven't granted it to any applicant in, that's come to this board since I've been on the planning board.
Correct.
As a matter of fact, we had a case tonight that we had to revisit because we require 12-foot sidewalks on Route 9, and the DOT came back and said, "You can't have 12-foot sidewalks on Route 9." Now that we know the DOT requires four-foot sidewalks on Route 9, that, that's going to be something that I think that this board is going to stand fast on, but again, that's my opinion.
That's understood.
Okay. So, are you removing that request for that waiver?
Mr. Nacastro, the ordinance requires 12 foot, whether DOT allows that or not, they're still going to require relief from how our ordinance is written now, even to provide the four-foot sidewalk. Because the ordinance would require 12 foot, so either way, they're going to require relief.
But the difference is whether it's relief completely from having any sidewalk or just relief from having a 12-foot going down to the four-foot sidewalk.
We have no problem if the board's required to provide four-foot sidewalk along Route 9.
Okay, just so you know what the parameters are for when you come back. Okay. Okay, I want to do two things at this point, seeing the late hour that it is.
Are you going to open it up to the public?
I am going to do that, but we do have some, we do have some other applications, I am going to open it up to the public. We're going to adjourn this meeting at 11:00 PM this evening, so we're going to have to reschedule some applications. We have Fairfield at Howell Road and, and Par Golf that might have to be rescheduled, so can those, representatives for those two applications come forward? I want to get this out of the way first.
Just about, I apologize. I thought you were just skipping over us.
Chairman Mark Flagler for Fairfield at Howell.
Okay. We have two, two applications, and if you, and as I take a look at each application, I think one's going to take a lot longer than the other one. I think Fairfield at Howell is going to be a long application, so you might want to reschedule. We plan on ending this meeting at 11:00. Par Golf, Mr. Cohen, if you want to wait around and see.
I'd prefer that, I literally have a two-minute presentation.
I understand that.
Mr. Chair?
I appreciate that.
I would just say this with regard to Fairfield, they were at a previous hearing in June. We brought them here tonight, and we did tell them they were going to be second on the agenda.
Okay.
There were intervening factors, and I, I think the board has, you know, responsibly managed, it's time tonight to get a lot done. But if we bring them back, we might want to look at making sure, since this will be their third time coming back, that we definitely get them on.
And they've been quite patient, and we do, we do appreciate that. And they would be, whenever night they get on, then if they agree to come back, they would be first, they would have to.
Barbara's taking a look. We have that meeting on the 18th, which we may now have two applications on. August 21st, we have Forest River Farms, which would be the first time we heard the application. Cranberry Estates, which I think would be the first time they're here. Cypress Properties, which is Caribou Coffee, that would be the first time that they're here. So, if you wanted to bring them back on August 21st and place them first.
Yes, the 21st. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Yeah, and first, since those three applications have never been heard before.
That's acceptable.
And we appreciate your patience, thank you.
Okay, so I just want to carry that application so that there's no further notice. The application of Fairfield at Howell slash Salvatore and Barbagallo, application numbers SP-911 and SD-2927 will be carried to the board's August 21st, 2008 meeting, 7:30 PM here in Preventorium Road, Howell, New Jersey, main meeting room. No further notice will be given to property owners, and you will be placed first on the agenda that night.
We need extension of time.
Can we consent on the record?
Yes.
You can.
Thank you.
August 21st is fine, and we'll just deal with that.
Thank you very much, counsel. Have a good evening. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open this up to the public. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak on the consignment sports application, please step forward and identify yourselves.
I feel bad.
Step forward, state your name for the record.
Ma'am, before, I just need to swear you in beforehand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could just state and spell your name and give us your address.
Marcy Nowicki, 9 Concord Circle in Howell.
Ms. Nowicki, just, how do you spell your last name?
N-O-W-I-C-K-I.
Okay.
I'm allowed to ask questions, correct?
You can ask questions, make statements, whatever you'd like.
Since you're going to convert from septic to sewer, where would your sewer pipe connect to the existing sewer?
We're proposing to extend the sewer pipe from the front of the building to the sewer main that runs actually within an easement in front of our property.
So, you'll not be impacting Route 9 at all, you'll be in the easement?
Correct.
I just would like to make a comment. I happen to be one of those Howell people who happen to like trees a great deal as well. However, I travel that Route 9 corridor every morning, somewhere between 8:00 and 8:20, and I see the congestion that occurs at the wah-wah filling station in White Street, as I'm sure you do. I have grave concern with blocking any site triangle in that area because you, to a certain extent, take your life in your hands as you pass by that stretch of Route 9 every morning. Because people don't seem to understand that the shoulder of the road is not to accelerate and go past four cars on the, on the right, it's a shoulder. People don't quite understand that. So, I, I would be very cautious with putting anything close to Route 9. Where will your security lights be in the building, in the exterior of the building at nighttime?
Security lighting here.
If I can't bring this up now, I'll bring it up at another time.
The security lighting will be mounted.
You can bring it up now, we just haven't reached that part of the testimony yet.
Well, I, I can wait, if there's going to be a second public comment.
The security lighting, we mounted to the exterior of the wall of the outside of the building.
The other thing that I would like to just comment about from my experience as, as a citizen here for a long time, is infiltration, detention, retention, call it what you will. And I understand how the calcu, I don't understand how the calculations are made, although they're very detailed every time I hear them. However, I have called engineering on a number of different occasions about a number of different basins that are, that they swore would be empty are never empty, and even today, there has to be six or eight inches of water in one of them that I have complained about. And I appreciate Chairman Aztevez's comment about mosquitoes in Howell, because it's horrible. And I think a large reason is because so many of our detention basins that are supposed to percolate and the water's supposed to go away, it just isn't happening. So, I would request the board pay very special attention to that. And I understand the nearest home is 250 feet away, but you're going to be right on that property line, and they do have a right to enjoy the 250 feet between their home and your detention basin, infiltration basin, excuse me. The other thing that caught me in, in your presentation, when you were speaking about your very large delivery trucks coming around the back of your building, which I think is far superior than trying to make a turn and come out on Route 9. However, the problem, as I see it as someone who frequents that road, is when they make the right onto White to get back onto 9, which is obviously where they're going to go, I would imagine, White Street's bloody awful in the morning, unless you can figure out a way to have those deliveries happening at a time when there is not such a significant traffic flow onto White Street, onto Route 9. I know that the, the board did it with Walmart, that their trucks can only deliver at certain times, and it quite frankly, has been successful from the Southern School perspective, as well as customers and kids, students, buses, et cetera, because it's the same kind of tight confined area. So, it may be something you want to look at to protect the people on White Street from enormous trucks.
Mr. Nowicki, I, I think you answered a valid question, I'd like the applicant to answer that. How often do you have deliveries, and is it, you know, once, once a day, once a week, bi-weekly?
We, we have deliveries every day. The majority of our deliveries come UPS and FedEx, which are the small trucks, they go to the back. We get what are called booking orders, which are large orders that come in with tractor-trailers. Typical booking orders will come in four times a year for each of our major brands. So, you may see a tractor-trailer in there, maybe, maybe once a week, a full-size tractor-trailer. For the most part, we're UPS, DHL type of deliveries. Most of our deliveries do occur, I, I understand the issue with the wah-wah is very busy in the morning. Our people aren't in until 10:00, which is generally after, you know, the wah-wah's busy 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning, so most of our deliveries do occur later in the day.
Okay. I do want to ask you a question. When we were discussing hours of operation, you just said your people are in at 10:00, but I have notes that I took that said you have people in at 8:00.
My buyer.
So, is it people at 8:00, or is it people at 10:00? Can your buyer accept a delivery from a tractor-trailer at 8:00?
No, because he can unload it. I have regular warehouse people that are there later in the day. He comes in at 8:00 o'clock in the morning because it's quiet and he can get his work done. The regular deliveries, the warehouse person has to be there to drive the forklift and unload the trucks. He doesn't do that.
I would just respectfully request that there be some kind of a, I hate to use the word restriction because it's negative and you didn't do anything wrong, but some kind of a, a way in which we can assure the safety of the people in and out of wah-wah, as well as the people on White Street have to contend with that as well. So, I would just respectfully request you'd look at that. I was a bit confused, and that's not hard to do, but be that as it may. When you were speaking about the driveway that go, that wraps around your building, and there was some discussion about the ordinance being 30 feet, and your, your driveway is going to be 25 feet?
That's correct.
I would just respectfully request that the board looks at that.
I don't believe that's an ordinance, I believe that's a, was a recommendation by the Bureau, is that, is it?
Department of Fire.
It's a recommendation, but it is an ordinance requirement, I believe it's in Section 188-106, that all main circulation aisles be 30 feet wide.
30 feet? But RECIS, I think, requires 25.
This is not a residential application, though.
In that ordinance, in my opinion, is geared more towards larger development where you have large parking aisles off of main circulation aisles, not smaller sites that don't, can't fit circulation aisles and then secondary parking aisles.
Well, I, I was just very confused by the discussion of 25, 30, 28 ordinance recommendations. I just wanted it clear for me, that's all. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment?
Mrs. Dixell, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Barbara Dixell, D is in David, I-X-E-L, Howell Township, Villages. Thank you. Did I hear someone say that detention basin was going to be in the buffer zone? Doesn't Howell Township have an ordinance that says you can't put detention basins in buffers?
They request a relief.
Um, I respectfully request that you deny the applicant's request for relief for this. We have to hang tough on our ordinances. If they want to come here to do business, obey the ordinances or don't come here. Pure plain and simple. You want to do business, do business the right way, or don't bother coming. We have ordinances for reasons of protecting people, protecting the township, protecting the economy, the ecology, protecting the environment. Please, for God's sake, respect us, respect our citizens, respect our ordinances, our council, our government, and the people who work day and night to make these, make Howell a better place to live, or please don't come here. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name and give us your address.
Don Smith, 54 Vandevere Road. First, I want to make it very clear, although I am a member of the Environmental Commission, I am not speaking for the commission. This is a, an existing operation right now. I'm not too happy about the basin being in a buffer area. However, currently, there is no stormwater management on this site. This becomes an improvement to an existing problem. I do think that there can be plannings to make it more aesthetically pleasing without affecting or detrimentally affecting the operation of that basin. So, I don't really oppose, personally oppose, the basin in the buffer, which is unique stance for me to take, if you know from the past. One thing, I do like the idea that you're going to look into saving those trees along White Street, and I await the decision on that. I don't even know for sure whether the road widening in that area is called for, but I'm sure your research into it will let the board know what the opinion is. know what the opinion is, and maybe we can save those trees. If it comes to banking those parking spaces, so be it. I mean, the trees come first. Okay, and that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion and thank the applicant for coming in this evening. I believe we have a September 18th date.
Yeah, I just wanted to check on the 18th. Are we going to be first on the agenda?
No. I have a small, minor subdivision, which should not take too long, and you would be second.
Do you want another date when we can be first?
No, that should be okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
And we're not going to bring Mr. Doran back, correct?
That's fine.
No more questions for him.
Okay, I'm just going to carry that application so that there's no further notice. The application, Consignment Sports, Donna and Peter Thompson, application number SP-915 will be carried to September 18th, 7:30 PM here in the main meeting hall, Preventoryum Road. No further notice will be given to property owners.
I'll take the renderings with me.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Before I close the next case, I just want to thank the board for working through the night without a break. We had a full agenda. I don't normally ask you to do that, but I do appreciate it. Our final case of the evening will be an amended preliminary and final site plan and conditional use, case number SP-902A, application of Par Golf LLC as applicant and owner, seeking an amended preliminary and final site plan and conditional use to construct a one-story building addition to utilize as a card room in the RRC zone on premises known as Block 185, Block 4001, Shore Oaks Drive. Exploration date of this application is October 5, 2008. Good evening, Mr. Cohen, and I'm going to hold you to your two-minute application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I am Todd Cohen, attorney for the applicant Par Golf LLC. To my left is Rich DeFalco, engineer from JKR Engineering, an engineer for the project. Mr. DeFalco has testified before you on many occasions as a professional engineer and planner. I would ask that his qualifications be accepted.
They'll accept his qualifications.
Mr. DeFalco, I'm just going to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Our board's professionals, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Chairman, very quickly, there's two aspects to the application. First, there's the waiver aspect, which we need the technical waivers to be declared complete, which is mentioned in Mr. Peters' letter on Page 4. And those technical waivers are outlined in paragraphs 5 and 6 of his letter of June 24th. If I may address those very quickly, Items 5, A through Q are items that you would generally need for a much larger site plan. As the board knows, this is simply an application for 480-square-foot addition to an existing 49,000-square-foot clubhouse that's already built to be used specifically for a card room, will not generate any additional membership, traffic, or the like.
Mr. Cohen, this information was all provided as part of the site plan application that Par Golf submitted to the planning board, which was, I think, granted within the last six months or so, correct?
Correct. That was my next comment.
So it's not that you're not providing it. It's really actually you have provided it in conjunction with the original approval.
That's correct. That's correct. That being said, I'd request that the waivers be granted so we can continue the application.
These items have already been provided in the original final.
Right. That's correct.
Okay, continue.
Okay. Mr. DeFalco, could you just give a brief explanation in less than two minutes to the board of what the site plan is all about?
Yes, I can. The existing clubhouse is situated at the end of Shore Oaks Drive, within the parking area of the golf course. And to the northeast, as shown on Page 2 of 3, the northeast corner of that building is proposed a 20-foot by 24-foot addition. It's approximately 12 feet high, a single story with a deck on top with railing. It is to be used as a card room attached to the building with the internal doorway. And the present surface at that location, there are concrete pavers on the ground. This will be placed where there are concrete pavers, so there's no change in the impervious of the site. It'll just be a 20-foot addition, 20 by 24-foot, 480-square-foot addition, a one-story with a patio on top of it, a flat roof with a railing around the edges of it to match the railing, which is existing on the patio to the west of this proposal.
And the proposed use will not generate any additional club membership or require any additional parking. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you've already stated there's no negative impact on the drainage because it's already an impervious surface, correct?
That's correct.
And as far as being able to be seen, this addition can hardly be seen from anywhere except the rear of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's extensive landscaping to the east of this area.
Has no effect on any of the residences whatsoever in the surrounding neighborhood, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Peters has raised a few questions in Section 8 of his letter of June 24th. If I could just run through this real quickly for the record. The only amenities in the room would be tables and chairs. There will be a balcony, as Mr. DeFalco testified, as part of the overall balcony, I mean patio area. Mr. DeFalco, will there be a sidewalk to the HVAC unit? I don't think so.
No, there will not be a sidewalk to the HVAC unit.
We touched on the parking. We've already indicated, look, do we need a silt fence, do you believe, during construction? Comment number F.
Silt fence around construction, we're less than 5,000 square feet. This addition would be exempt from free old soil. The applicant closely monitors construction on-site, has existing improvements around the site, and does not want to disturb any of his landscaping areas, so he's going to keep it a very neat and clean site. I don't think we need to put a silt fence in, but he will maintain the area very clean situation because it is an exclusive club.
And I believe as a comment G, we've already testified it's the effect on stormwater. Mr. Chairman, that's the application in a nutshell, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I have a question. Are there going to be any restroom facilities or plumbing going into this? Okay, thank you. I didn't see any. I just want to make sure.
Mr. Cohen, quick question. It says men's card room. Are women going to be allowed in there?
No, they're really not, because you got to get there through the men's grill room, and you really can't. They could go through the outside. If they want to play cards, I guess they could.
Mr. Peters, do you have any comment?
No, sir.
Do any other board members have any comment? At this point, I see no comment from any board members. I'd like to open this application up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that has any comment on this application? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and reopen it back up to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make sure you approve the application.
Let's second that.
I second it.
I got a motion from Vislaki and a second from Clark.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Frazi?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. McCastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Chairman Estevez?
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you hearing us this evening.
You were more than two minutes, but I'll cut you some slack.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Getting back to the application of Fork Partners, the application did include an application or a Woodlands Management application package, the application form and the plan. Those were reviewed by our office. Sure enough, we didn't list it as preliminary and final site plan, minor subdivision, block consolidation, and Woodlands Management. But in point of fact, it was submitted with the original application, and it was reviewed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You can certainly, if that's everyone's recollection, you can absolutely act on this tonight. But if not, I can, you know, look at the minutes between now and when we meet again in two weeks to see what, you know, actually trends.
Is holding this off going to be a major problem for this applicant?
Mr. DeFalco's here. He can address.
We are waiting to submit to Mass. Monseur. We can't, they only gate one month, miss the next one, another whole month, so it really isn't worth to give this a thought this evening.
And you said that that plan was reviewed, Ernie, and it was acceptable?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Okay, and we're okay with the fact there was another issue?
We resolved that the sign for Walgreens would have the digital reader board but would not be permitted to blink or, you know, have colors that are pulsating or anything.
Okay.
So it's that, and we would revise the resolution to also indicate that Woodlands Management was approved.
I mean, I personally don't see any reason to hold this applicant up based on the comments from Mr. Peters and from Mr. Cacharo. I hope that other members of the board feel the same. And since we're at the point where we need a motion, I'd like to entertain one.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution for Fork Partners LLC, case number SP-916.
I second it.
Mr. Castro and Mr. Tantillo.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mr. Tantillo?
Yes.
Mr. Vislaki?
Yes.
Mr. McCastro?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Resolution is memorialized.
You're welcome. Mr. Cacharo, do we need to go into executive session?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, for that, I just, Barbara, I need to be excused from the August 21st meeting due to work-related. I'm going to be at disaster recovery testing.
Have a nice birthday.
Yeah, it's my birthday, too.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Now I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Burgess and Mr. Vislaki, thank you. I want to thank the board for going straight through tonight. Thank you very much.